Okay, good morning. We'll call the council committee, the whole budget discussions to order, and we're going to go through and review the 2013 budget. There are a list of items that have been referred to the meeting from various committee meetings over the past while. Administration has some recommendations. As we go in, council, I'm going to ask that on all items that would require a change to the budget, that we have a motion, one way or another, sorry, that we have a motion in the positive to add or to change the budget, and then if we choose not to support it, that's fine. I just do that because in the past, we've had situations where we had items come forward and council members weren't necessarily supportive, and so we had no action on an item which was a little bit awkward, considering the majority of these have been referred here by committee. So we need to take action one way or another. So I'd ask that we have motions on everything to get them on the floor, and even the proposer doesn't necessarily have to speak to the motion in favor, and you're still able to vote against it. So with that, I think we'll turn it over to Ken Anderson to introduce the presentation. If council members have a, some additional items that they, we've all seen the presentation in advance or had an opportunity to, if there were items that you wanted to bring forward that weren't reflected in the presentation that administration has developed, I'll ask for those just before we head into the different areas, service areas presentations, so that you can highlight those and have an opportunity for the director, whose service area that your request would relate to, speak to it as well. Counselor Rice.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Anderson for the information that a 1% tax adjustment is $870,000. I think that was really good information to have up front, and I appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Okay, and so with that, I think we'll turn it over to Ken to do the introduction and lead us through the presentation before we hand it off to the directors. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The agenda for today is to do a summary of 2012-2014 plan. It's been a year since we've talked about it, so I thought I'd remind everybody about it. We'll talk about the 2013 revenue and expenditures, the recommended review process, which will be similar to the process we've done in the past as we go through the items. We'll flag them, and then we'll go and identify if council has any further issues before we get into the referred items, which will then be discussed by each of the directors and the city managers. So we'll go through corporate services, city manager, community growth, community living, and community safety, and then we'll get to the summary of the tax implications of the budget. So a summary of the 2012-2014 plan, I've broken it up into two components, one the operating and one capital. The first one's the operating. We had a loss of the county fire agreement at the beginning of 2012 that resulted in a net loss of revenue of $2.2 million. There was the transfer of corporate services that were being provided by the city to Aquiterra that changed as well in 2012, and that was a loss of $2 million in revenue. There was the annualization of the multiplex in 2012 because it just opened up really December of last year, and that resulted in an additional $4.2 million in cost to reflect a full year's operation. We've included modified hours for the leisure center, and that's approximately $950,000. And there was the, no addition of, no new staff except for the facilities currently under construction, and that, at that point, it was the East Link Center as well as the third fire hall. Carrying on in the operating plan, there were no changes to the service levels. We used $4 million from the financial stabilization reserve to moderate the property tax increases, and that was over the three-year period. We've also used $1.7 million from the municipal sustainability initiative, or the MSI, in the operational plan, and we're allowed to do that by the province. Moving over to the capital side, we do have a conditional contribution to the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum, $1 million. That was over a three-year period, 2012 through 2014. There were upgrades to the Curling Club and the Live Theater. The leisure center, there's upgrades scheduled of $2 million in each of 2013 and 2014, and that's really the only borrowing that we have in this plan over the three-year period. And then there was the development of the North Bear Creek. Further information on the capital side, there was a completion of the Gateway soccer fields, improvements to the Musco CP Park entrances, and there's two entrances to be completed, the creation of a downtown transit transfer terminal, construction of a northside snow dump as well, and we had road projects totaling approximately $40 million over the three-year period. And just to remind you, what was agreed to on the property tax adjustment side, 2012 was 4%, 2013 was 3.7%, and 2014 was 3.3%. When we look at the longer debt side, you can actually see it goes down in '13. It's at $143 million in '12, goes down to $138 million in '13, but then you see it goes up in 2014 to $149 million. What that reflects is the airports anticipating a borrowing of $16 million in 2014 for their runway expansion. What we do is we borrow for them because we get the same rates and same credit rating as the province does, which results in lower interest rates, and the airport actually pays us back, so there is no cost to the city for the borrowing. So what we have in 2014 is an estimated 67% of the limit. However, if you take out the $16 million that's anticipated for the airport in 2014, as well as the $8 million that they've already borrowed for terminal improvements a couple of years ago, you actually move it down to about $125 million, which is a percent of debt limit of about 56%, which is quite good. I should also point out, if you have any questions as we go through this, if you need some questions of clarification, you can just raise them as we go through it. So the next item would be the 2013 revenue adjustments. We did set a budget for 2013, but it was, it was based on assumptions, and sometimes those assumptions change, so we're making some adjustments to the revenue. First of all, in the general side, there was a $500,000 contingency. Also, it's related to the East Link Center. We were unsure how the operations were going to settle out, so council did agree to put a $500,000 contingency in there, and it's done actually much better than we thought, so there was no need for the contingency, so we can put it back into 2013. Property tax growth, originally we estimated at $1.5 million. We're actually closer to $2.5 million, which is quite an improvement over 2012, which was $950,000. In the boom years, a couple of years ago, actually, our growth was in the $3.5 million per year area, so we're starting to ramp up there again. So for the $2.5 million in growth, approximately $1.5 million of it was residential, and $1 million was the non-residential. The Atco Electric franchise fee, every year Atco gives us projections of what they believe their distribution is going to be, and that's where the franchise fee comes from, so those numbers are directly from Atco. Aquiterra is similar. They give us what they anticipate their revenue to be, and our franchise fee is calculated thereon. It's similar to the Atco gas franchise fee. So when you total it all up, we have an additional revenue of $2.472 million going into '13. On the expenditure side, we believe the supplementary assessment for 2013 will be slightly lower, so that's $25,000. The fire department, this is one of the referred items that we will get to later, but administration has recommended funding it off, so it's included in here, and that's been reduced from an original $150,000 to $88,000. The fire department has found some other revenue opportunity, as well as they've reviewed their expenditure side. Streetlights, that's the electrical cost. We've been running a deficit for the last couple of years, and what we've done is, we took it to committee, and we originally thought $500,000 would be sufficient. However, we've had a relook at it, and we're recommending that it be increased by $750,000.
Sure. Ken, I saw a question. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, like you just said, it was $500,000, and a couple weeks later, it's $750,000. What's it going to be next year?
Well, we believe that $750,000 will correct the issue, unless there's further adjustments by Atco.
So that would be Atco.
The Atco drives the cost side. However, the city will be looking at standards in whether to carry on with the same street lighting standards that we have or to change them somewhat. So that would be the way that we could control the cost to some degree.
And we'll, we'll get more information on each of these referred items when the director comes up, so we can maybe get some detail on the historical underbudgeting in this area, I guess. Counselor Rice?
I just wanted to remind Counselor Gustafson that AUMA, with the Minister of Environment, McLean, is working on replacing all the streetlights with LED, and just received a $100,000 grant to look at the potential for selling the, the carbon credits from that. That will, that will knock that right out of the ballpark downward, so it is moving ahead.
Counselor Gustafson?
In the meantime, we just have to pay.
Yeah.
Yep.
But there's light at the end of the tunnel.
Moving on. Ken?
As Mayor Given indicated, these are referred items, and we'll actually get to the specific items, so you can ask further questions on them. And the reason we've recommended funding, because it's, it's a cost, and we need to pay it. The next item that's been referred is the Center 2000. It relates to the operations side, and Greg will speak to that when we get there, but it's been recommended for funding, and that's $43,000. Then we get to the salary contingency. What we do is we have two collective agreements, and we have out of scope staff. What we do is we make some assumptions on where we believe settlements will go, and we set aside funding for that. If the settlements are less, then we don't use the funds, so it's just a contingency at this point.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Radnor?
Thank you, Mayor Given.
Ken, can you just remind us when contracts are due, when our particular contracts with the city?
Sure. The, the agreement with the firefighters expired in December 31 of 2011. The agreement with QP expires December 31 of 2012, this year.
Thanks, Ken. A question from Counselor Rice was, have we started negotiations? Ms. Anderson?
Yes, we have. They're in the preliminary stage at this point.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
So if we take the added revenue of $2.472 million and take away the expenditures anticipated to be $1.44 million, we have an operational surplus of $988,000. So there are a few options you can do here. You could expend the $988,000 on some of the referred items, and the tax increase would remain at 3.7%. Or the other extreme is you spend nothing of the $988,000, and the tax increase becomes 2.6%, or you do something in between. I've included some information on the estimated capital fund balances. This includes a few of the reserves, as well as some of the funding programs. So that's just for information if we need to move forward on that when we're looking at the referred items, but I really don't have anything to add on, unless you have any questions on it.
I think we may. Ken, Counselor Radnor?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Ken, can you tell me, MSI, I'm just looking at balance after proposed changes. So tell me what that means. That means after 212, after 213, as it sits today, and my other questions are, can we choose to use those monies at any time, like this year, or like, and do we get more MSI next year? Yeah, just give me a little more on MSI.
Okay. On your first question, the difference between the balance before proposed changes and after the proposed changes, the after proposed changes reflect the recommended funding items that administration has made in this plan.
Right, yeah.
And yes, we could select to use $2.2 million of the MSI. We do get more next year. The ability, you have the ability to use it, carry it forward up to five years after getting it, so there will be more coming next year. And that's, we've also built that into the 2014 plan.
Yep. Okay, see, Counselor Rice?
Ken, what, what prediction did you use for increase for the salaries?
Well, we've used, we've used, depending on which agreement it is.
I, the province is using 3.5, 3.5, and 4, and I just wondered if we were, if we're finding that generous.
We're estimating something similar.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Ken. Nothing else on capital fund balances, then?
Okay, I'll just go through the recommended review process, and then council can bring up any additional items not on this list. So we'll do similar to what we did in the past. We've made recommendations whether items should be funded or not funded, and it's indicated in each item. You can flag items during the presentation, and once we have all the flagged items, we can possibly have a short break and then go through it, and council can debate which ones they wish to fund or unfund.
Okay. I just wonder, for council's benefit, administration, if we can go through and highlight items as if they're already funded in the capital plan but requiring a change, because I think some of the items from Public Works, that's essentially what they are, is administration is, the money is already there, and they wouldn't require, that they require a change to funding source. Is that correct, Ken?
There's two items at the end of the referred list that are just a change in the funding source. They've already been funded.
Okay, so if we can sort of note that when we get to those, so that council is aware, because we do need a motion to change a funding source on the budget, even if it's money that's already there. So, so I guess at this point, I'd ask, were there any, council members had an opportunity to see this presentation and the items that are going to come very shortly here, were there any other items that were not flagged in the presentation that council members wanted to highlight and have an opportunity to discuss? Counselor Crokin?
Yeah, Mayor Given, thank you. Is this the time for brand-new items?
Well, yeah, I suppose it is, yeah.
This would be in Public Works, I would guess. It's the 84th Avenue Ring Road.
Okay.
I would like.
Eighty-fourth Street?
Or Eighty-fourth Street, sorry. Yep. We won't have an Anthony Hindi, but this would be our scaled-down version.
Okay, so Counselor Crokin, so we'll have, we'll have a little bit of a discussion about the Eighty-fourth Street.
Thank you.
Counselor Crokin, do you have, so this isn't a committee meeting. I don't know that we'll have an opportunity to go through the entire sort of things. Are you having a recommendation of what it is that you'd like to talk about? I mean, we're at budget, so we need to have some idea of, are we?
I guess if, if I could, your, your bill, I don't know if, if we've talked about it before, but I know there was provincial funding, and I would, I would just kind of like to give us a number that we were going to look at it in 2013 or 2014, that we could put some money toward it.
Okay, so you don't have a specific amount?
No, no, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, so we'll ask if we can maybe just flag Eighty-fourth Street, and administration can highlight what they potentially had in the capital plan, had identified for the cost of that project. Counselor Rice?
The streetcar stage is needing some badly needed spiffing up. Was Dwayne able to peel that out of his original budget, or do we need to add funds for it?
Is that a facilities item?
It's Ken, it's fleet.
Ken?
Fleet item, and I'm really not aware. I'd have to check with Dwayne to find out.
Okay, so maybe we can find some information about that. Oh, I see Jeanette maybe has some information?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have been working with Dwayne on that item, and there is funding from the, this year's 2012 budget for that.
Thank you.
Satisfied, Counselor?
And one more. Transit terminal. I wondered if we should be looking at increasing the budget for that and do a transit terminal with a three-story parcade on top of it.
Okay, so the transit terminal is already a flagged item.
Yeah.
And so it's already going to come up. So can we bring that up in that discussion?
Sure, okay.
Can we bring that up in discussion and debate? Okay. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to flag the Dave Bar, please.
Okay, and Counselor Gustafson, do you have something specific?
The twinning of the Dave Bar.
Okay, Dave Bar twinning. Okay, so I think that that's, I think that that's all the additional items, then, that council members have. If so, then we'll go into the presentations from the different service areas, and Ken, are you up first?
Yes, I'm up first. The first item I have is the East Link Center, and in the original construction budget, we had $6.2 million in contributions. We actually received $1.86 million in contributions, so there was a shortfall, and we need to close out this project. So what we did last year was that we agreed to a municipal tax rate of 4%. The education requisition was less than 4%. So what council agreed to do was to actually raise the municipal tax increase beyond 4% so that the total tax was 4%. And what that did was it levied an additional $2.182 million. And at that time of doing the property tax bylaw, council agreed to offset the shortfall in the sponsorship, shortfall. So that still leave the, leaves a shortfall of $2.158 million. Now, that's additional levy that we had in 2012 automatically carries forward. So we can, there's a couple of ways of going about doing this. You could take $2.158 million of that and complete the funding the shortfall, and it's gone away. Or the other option is that you could borrow all the way up to $2 million and use that to fund off the shortfall. So what you would do is you'd have, you'd borrow $2 million, and it would cost you about $150,000 a year to service it, so that's your other option. So the two options are either to fund off with the additional tax levy, and it's gone away. The other option is to borrow up to $2 million. It doesn't have to be $2 million, and use the funding for other referral items that you may want to do. Is that clear?
I think so, so that'd have a fairly significant impact on council's ability to address some of the other projects through the list, wouldn't it, Ken?
Well, if you decided that you wanted to use the added tax revenue from 2012, yes, it would limit you. It would limit you to the $988,000 to keep it at 3.7%, unless you wanted to pick up further funding through a tax increase and take it beyond 3.7%, so.
Okay, okay. So is there, so we sort of have a decision point here. I suppose it could always be revisited later on. Is there any discussion on this point? Counselor Rice?
Can we, can we leave it for a while? As we go through the, the ones here, we're going to get a better sense of, of where, of what we're wanting to do with it.
Okay, sure. I mean, I suppose this, anything is still adjustable up until the end, and we're done, and so we can certainly review this again at the end. Okay?
It would be appropriate to make motions on the items that you would like to fund off, and administration can recommend a funding plan for it.
Okay, okay, okay. So I think that's the process that will follow then? Okay?
The second item I have is, came out on Tuesday. It relates to the Internet voting pilot project. We are in the process of, if council wants to go ahead with this project, of completing a collaboration grant application with Fort McMurray. That grant provides up to a maximum of $250,000 that we could use for this pilot project, so that would be $125,000 each to municipality if we were to get the maximum. We're recommending a range of costs, and the high end would require an additional $300,000 in municipal funds, plus the $125,000, assuming we get approved for the grant and we get the full amount.
Okay, so this is the start council of items that have come recommended from committee, and so we need a motion one way or another on them to deal with them. Counselor Rice?
I thought we were going to just make motions, and if you don't like it, vote against, not negative motions.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Um, okay, I'll move if we put the $300,000 in. And then if I could speak to, I'm really torn on this one. We pushed the minister pretty hard on this one. I'm, I'm really uncomfortable having done that, but it's an awful lot of money, which would only give us, my understanding is just the advanced poll, nothing else. And that's an awful lot of money for that, but how foolish would we look to the minister if we backed away now? So I'm, I, I'm, I don't think I'm speaking against the motion, which would be contrary to the rules. I'm expressing a concern.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Any further discussion or debate? Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. Is this a one-time fee of the $300,000? If this continues, that we have an Internet voting process in place, will we be still obligated to pay this every election?
Ms. Anderson?
Well, we could refine the numbers once we've been through it one time. However, there would be added costs for every election thereafter that you use this process.
And what is the cost at this present time for an election for the city of Grand Verde?
The cost is approximately $125,000, I believe, for a traditional vote, which would also have to occur.
So we would have an increase of $300,000. So the election, the election would cost us about $425,000?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm going to be voting against this. We don't know what money we are going to get from the province, and it's all hinged really on that. And I think our, our last year, we had, or the last election, we had something like 21% of the people came out and voted. Now, whether those people will vote on the Internet and not go to the polls, I, I'm just not sure if that will bring more people out. It, it might be a lot handier for some people, but I think that's an awful lot of money that we, it's an unknown, so I'll be voting against it.
Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Are we speculating that if this project is a success, that it'll be rolled out to other municipalities across the province and then funded by the province, or will, will it be forever funded by the city?
Ms. Anderson?
Well, it is a pilot project. The results, assuming we did it, and possibly Edmonton and the surrounding areas did it, would drive which way the province would go in the whole Internet voting. Would they fund it off in the future? They may possibly fund off a proportion with me. My guess would be that the municipality would bear the cost of the election.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm leaning towards Counselor Crokin, a big part because you get $125,000 to run the election, another $300,000, and the timeframe for this is really late in the game. It's only for advanced polling, so I mean, that's going to be three times what we're paying now. polling. So, I mean, that's going to be three times what we're paying now. That's a lot of money.
Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Given. At committee, we had a hundred and twenty-six thousand allocated towards staffing this, this mission. I'm just curious, is that, is that a high estimate on, on staffing?
Mr. Anderson?
I'll refer that one to Audrey.
Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The increased, the budget for a hundred and twenty thousand that was initially identified is for temporary-term staff in the IT, primarily in the IT and communications area, to support the IT requirements for the Internet voting and to roll out the public awareness and advertising and marketing campaigns that would be required to inform the public, as well as to support the requirements for voter online registration. It does require a personal involvement rather than just a computer involvement in the technology that currently exists to allow folks to register online.
So it's not just staffing, excuse me, it's not just staffing, it's marketing and some training and some education as well as staffing?
Mayor Given, the hundred and twenty thousand is purely for staff.
The functions that those staff are going to do, I mean, why would we have marketing staff, for example?
To dedicate to the election for information. It would also be communication to help develop the plan, because there is additional funds identified for the advertising that's going to be required, as well as the marketing, informing the public of what's in, in the process. In the study that was done in the city of Edmonton, significant marketing and awareness is required, and that's on top of the staff requirements. There are no dedicated single staff that would be able to support this project unless we add staff to the budget for the staff.
So the additional staff, for example, of marketing would be there to help educate the public about how to use the system. Is that correct?
That would be a big part of it, yes. And, and also the voter, the voter validation that's required online.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also struggled with this one. I was back and forth in my head a lot of times. And I'm thinking that I'd like to support Internet voting for our city. I know it's a lot of money, but three hundred thousand dollars is what we would be putting in our budget. It's, we've always known that it was going to be about five hundred thousand dollars to implement a system like this. That's been in previous budgets before, and it's shown up as an unfunded item. This grant that we were talking about is a regional collaboration grant. It's for quarter million dollars, and the municipality of Wood Buffalo would be in partnership with us. So if we don't go forward with this, then they won't get the grant either, which makes me feel twice as bad, because we were the ones that were pushing and got them on board. But I think that in terms of Internet voting, it's something that our city could really use. We have a really busy population of people, just like Wood Buffalo does, and we need to give our residents options when it comes to election time. That's, that's typically why we have such a low turner, or voter turnout rate, is everyone's so busy, or they're out of town, and they don't have the opportunity to come down to the polls. So three hundred thousand dollars, although it is a lot of money, I think that it, it's money well spent in helping that democratic process and possibly getting people engaged in how their city functions and the decisions that are made.
Thanks, Counselor Wong. Counsel, if I could, I want to avoid, I certainly want to be a part of the debate, but I want to avoid being the last one in the debate. I don't think I should get the right to sort of close. If that's okay, can I talk in now? I'm going to be voting in support of the three hundred thousand to fund this. Counselor Wong mentioned a couple. This is a city of Grand Prairie initiative since, I'm trying to remember whether it was two thousand and six or two thousand and four, but quite a while ago, where we were at the AUMA convention, Grand Prairie actually put this on as an AUMA resolution to allow the, to ask the province to allow municipalities to do this. So I think it's something that we've been working towards for a long time. I believe it's a good investment in increasing the avenues for people to vote. And I think it's probably the only time that we're going to get the province to pay for any portion of conducting an election, traditional or otherwise, in the future. I mean, they don't have a practice in the past of paying any money towards local government elections. If and when Internet voting becomes a reality for all municipalities across the province, I don't believe for a second that the province will support all municipalities in delivering Internet voting. I think this is the only time to get them to pay something towards that. And I believe that our community would have a leg up on, on others in understanding the process, because the province will eventually, eventually introduce this and allow access to all municipalities. I prefer that we had some experience rather than not have an experience in the first election where everybody across the province is trying it. And finally, I think this is the type of initiative that fits with our brand of being resourceful and innovative and trying new things and delivering them for a youthful population that's accepting of them. So that's my bits, and I'll let the rest of the debate go on without, without popping in. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Mayor Given, I understand you're quite familiar with, with the issue, and there's been some results from, from some municipalities out east. I'm just wondering actually if maybe you could share some of those results as it pertains to the increase in voter turnout?
Well, if I can, in my, my experience, I don't know if Audrey has some additional information, but the, sort of the broad strokes are that after a number of elections in Ontario and Nova Scotia in particular, that voter turnout still goes up and down depending on the issues in the election and the candidates that are running. It's probably the largest influencer. But it's very clear that more and more people that are voting are choosing to vote electronically. So I think in the recent Nova Scotia elections, up to sixty-some percent of the people who voted chose to vote through electronic means rather than going to a polling station. So it has the potential to increase voter turnout, the same way adding an additional polling station somewhere else in the city would have the potential to increase voter turnout. But to me, it seemed in other examples across the country that residents in communities are choosing to use this method when it's available to them. That's the, I think, the fairest way to say it without sort of trying to suggest that, that there will be cost savings or that there will be increased turnout. I think there's a potential for that. But it has been very clear that people are choosing to use this avenue when it's available to them. I don't know, Ms. Turney, if you have additional information? I see you're sort of flipping through. Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There has been Internet voting, starting in Markham, Ontario, was the primary situation, and there has been, in information that's been provided, that there's been only a moderate, the term moderate has been used in overall voter turnout. There has been an increase or a shift in voters choosing to vote via Internet as opposed to physically going to a voting station, but there's been no perceptible increase in actual overall turnout. That information has also been reflected in Internet voting data collected in Peterborough, Ontario, and Halifax Regional Municipality in Nova Scotia. Those are the three biggest communities in eastern Canada who have had Internet voting since two thousand and three, two thousand and six, two thousand and eight, two thousand and twelve. And as Mayor Given pointed out, there's been an increased shift from the voters voting in the station to the voters voting online, but there's been no increase marked or otherwise in overall turnout.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. It's probably a question for Audrey. For voting day, what would they have to do before voting day to get their number? Would they have to come to City Hall, show some information, and then they can vote?
Ms. Turney?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Actually, the Internet Voting Pilot Project would only apply to those eligible voters who would be voting in a, most likely a two-week period prior to election day, and they would need to register online in a formal process, including providing identification to validate who they are as a resident of the city of Grand Prairie, as well as complete an appropriate application form. And there would be a visual view of the identification that would need to be scanned and submitted to the city to verify that the individual is a bona fide voter. That information then would be confirmed, and a PIN number would be generated back to the voter. There is no Internet voting on election day. It would only be in a two-week window prior to election day, and would most likely close the Thursday or the Friday prior to the October twenty-first, twenty thirteen election day.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. This last couple of weeks has been pretty stressful on this question here. Do I support it, or don't I support it? And I can honestly tell you, I lost a lot of sleep. The city of Grand Prairie, when we do an election, just, excuse me, we could easily just put one polling, polling station out in City Hall, and everybody could vote at here. And whether we get people to show up or not is up to them. We have, in the past, had many obligations to put voting stations throughout the city for the ease of people to vote. We get approximately less than twenty-five percent voter turnout. Am I correct, Mr. Turney? Okay, so since the last election, this has been the topic of support with council. Do we further pursue this Internet voting? In the last two years, we have brought it to AUMA. We've talked to the ministers face to face and said we really want to go this direction. We are the smallest or youngest community in Canada, the size of this city. We are a forward-thinking community, and it's the way of the future, I feel. There is a cost. There's a cost to everything that we do, and if we can generate a better turnout, maybe we'll get twenty-eight percent, maybe we get thirty-five percent. But this is the decision that we have to make today, and the next election will be in four years. So I don't like spending the money, I can tell you that right now, but my obligation is to further this through, and I'll be supporting this.
Counselor Rice?
I guess it's one of those things where I'm feeling timing is so important. This might be a good project, but to view the fact I can't get on the city's wireless network today, and our little TVs don't work, I'm not feeling like technology is my friend. You know, I mean, if we have this kind of problems, it just kind of scares me.
Okay, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. My preference would be that we use the next budget cycle to put away some money so that we can gradually put together the revenue so that we can have Internet voting the election after next, is my, my preference. I think this is a significant amount that comes at a time when we have a number of, a number of challenges with respect to another worthy referrals. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. It looks like the queue is clear. It sounds like also that everybody had an opportunity to speak their piece, so I'll call for the vote on Counselor Rice's motion to add this to the budget. Call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so that amount will be added. And Ken, did you have anything else in the corporate services area? Sorry, sorry, Ken, that was everything for you?
That's it for me.
Okay, thanks very much. We'll move on to the city managers' area. Mr. Sherbet?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have two items. Oh, they haven't popped up on the screen yet. Okay, well, I'll just keep talking about them.
Which, sorry, which computer are they supposed to come off of? Who's, is it on Ken's?
It's, well, it must be on Ken's, but it's, but it's not, here we go. Okay. So the first item is strategic infrastructure of six point six seven million. This is currently funded in the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen capital plan. Two point six million of it is funded out of the transportation system levy reserve, and the remainder comes out of funding sources that are more flexible. The transportation system levy reserve requires that it be done for roads, whereas the other funding sources, you could use it for other infrastructure projects. One, one thing of note is, under the current capital plan, the title of this area is Strategic Road Priorities. However, we're currently, our economic development department is currently doing an industrial attraction strategy. And to be more flexible, we felt it'd be more appropriate to entitle this area Strategic Infrastructure as opposed to strictly roads. It is funded. It was referred to budget for further discussions, but it is in part of the capital plan.
I see Counselor Radburn in the queue. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to make a motion, if I might. I would move that, that four million dollars of this, yeah, about, just four million dollars and change, the right number somebody can tell me. Take off the two point six from the six point six seven, please. So it's four point oh seven or something like that million. Be, continue to be included in our capital plan, but be committed to resource the industrial attraction strategic plan. Yeah, I'll leave it that way. That basically speaks to what Greg was saying. Gives us some flexibility. The industrial attraction strategic plan will be public soon, the next month or two, and there are some, some recommendations there that deal with infrastructure, that I think this money would be, give us some flexibility to resource some of those recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Rice?
I'll support Counselor Radburn's motion, except I'm distressed that it's there. A year ago, we were very clear that we saw this as a priority, that we wanted to look at road projects that, in areas that could enhance our tax revenue. And a year later, we're saying, hey, you know what, we should do something. And I, I guess I'm, I'm surprised that, that a year has passed, and we're not any closer. Now, we're going to define a strategy, and it's taken us a year to do that, to start on it. I, I'm annoyed.
I'll, you know, fair enough. Counselor Rice, I'll speak to that, though. We have had a community committee engaged, an economics development steering committee that is actually from cross-sectorial, and given us some recommendations on, on what the barriers are to attracting more industrial, commercial development. They've identified some things that, that are barriers that aren't roads. And so I think actually this is going to be time well spent to ensure that we can spend the money on the right things. So, and I believe, as Counselor Radburn said, that plan's going to be coming forward in very short order. So certainly understand the frustration, but I believe that the plan is going to provide the level of detail we need to know exactly where to make these investments. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just on that note, along the eighty-fourth street corridor, like from one thirty-two to a hundred, I do believe that would open up an awful lot of that land to the east there, which would give us that opportunity of having some industrial land on that area of town, which we are, we are, our city, we are short of. So I'll wait, listen out our strategic plan, but that would be one of my plans, that we could open up some areas there, and once we get a road through there, it will just facilitate people developing that land.
Any further discussion or debate? Counselor Radburn's motion, so this money is already in the budget, but Counselor motions, Counselor Radburn's motion speaks to specifying that four point zero seven million of it is to resource the coming industrial attraction strategy. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Okay, City Manager Greg? Sorry, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Should we deal with the other, the two point six as well? Are you going to speak more to it, or?
I guess, does, does administration have recommendations at this point on specific roads?
Should we leave it as strategic road transportation system priorities? Because that money has to be used for transportation, as I understand it.
Yeah, so.
What, what admin think?
Sure, so, Mr. Anderson?
Well, my suggestion is you leave the two point six million dollars in the reserve, and administration will bring forward recommendations on projects for it.
So does that, does that mean we need a motion to keep it in?
If something's already in the plan, we just need a motion to take it out, so. No, if something's already in the plan, we just need a motion to take it out, so.
Good.
Okay. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Probably appropriate, I should speak after the motion? Are you making another motion?
No.
Oh. Okay, would we be able to use that 2.64, say, if we wanted to put a water line, say, to the airport or wherever?
No, this is for roads.
Just roads, okay, thank you.
This could be for like 84th Street.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's nothing else on the strategic infrastructure, Mr. City Manager?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Given. The next item is the Centre 2000 project. This is also, is part of the, if you recall Mr. Anderson's further, or previous discussion about expenditure adjustments, this Centre 2000 referred item is part of that, so it's built into the budget, operating budget as of currency.
So, built into administration's recommendations?
Correct.
So, we actually still, this is one where administration is recommending that we put it in? I believe we still need a motion to actually do this, though, right?
Yes.
To change the plan.
That's correct. This is an item that came forward to GGS at the beginning of November and was referred here for council to consider putting it into the budget. Over the years, there has been a, for all the council members who sat on the Centre 2000 board, you're familiar with the fact there's been a funding gap occur over there for a variety of reasons, and this is the money to put it back in there and correct that funding gap.
Okay, I see councillor Rice.
I would be prepared to make the motion, and in speaking to it, I would say this building is definitely one of the city assets, and I think any prudent person knows it's important to protect your assets.
Okay, thanks councillor Rice. So councillor Rice makes the motion to add $43,000, and that's, is that capital or operational? Mr. Anderson says to the operational side, to the operational budget for Centre 2000. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I definitely support this motion. This motion comes from previous agreements that were created by the city and the operators of Centre 2000, as well of it, as well as its tenants, and the $43,000 shortfall is something that hasn't been addressed to date because it was trying to be, it was attempted to be addressed using other methods, like facility rentals and things like that. But it has turned out that this number started off a lot smaller, and it's increasing every year. And if we don't start to address this now, it was projected that in 10 years, we're going to see an $80,000 shortfall for operations. I know that this is something that the city needs to buck up and pay for, because it was the city's agreement that created this, the shortfall in operations. The operational shortfall comes from common area costs, it's shared costs for all the tenants in the building, and the city, the city has stake in that building with its tenants, and it also has partnership agreements with the tenants. So, you know, that's the reason why I believe that it needs to be funded, and it needs to be funded now before it becomes a much larger issue.
Okay, thanks councillor Wong. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, I will also support this motion. I think my colleagues have given a bit of a context. For me, this would ensure the ongoing sustainability of our operational funding for Centre 2000.
Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think if anybody hasn't been over to Centre 2000 in the last little while, after the reconstruction of the kitchen and the front area there, I do believe that it's going to be rented out more often, and we'll see our revenues go up, so I'm in support of the motion.
Thanks councillor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe those were all the items for the city manager's area, and so we move on to community growth. Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is the Centre for Research and Innovation. The centre approached the city earlier this year and requested $50,000. This was to be one-time funding to provide core services from July of 2012 through June of 2013. Council at that time approved $25,000 in the 2012 budget for CRI and referred the remaining $25,000 to this, these budget deliberations. CRI is transitioning to a fee-for-service mod, model, which should be in place in 2013, and the balance of the $25,000 is needed to carry the operations from January to June. The money we've confirmed with CRI is still requested at this time.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm prepared to make that motion. I'll move that we fund the Centre for Research and Innovation for $25,000, and just to speak to this briefly, as most of you are aware, CRI is part of the GPRC here in town, and I think the city should be very pleased to be in a partnership with the college in order to fund CRI. As well, you know, just speaking about innovation throughout the Peace Country area, we hold the highest amount of patents in all of Canada, if not all of North America, I believe, and part of this is due to the entrepreneurial spirit that we have here. CRI definitely assists in, with these entrepreneurs receiving these patents, helping them, guide them through bringing their ideas to a successful product line. So, I would definitely encourage all of council to support this one-time ask of $25,000.
Thanks councillor Monroe. And any further discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll support this motion as well. For me, it's, the ask was to provide transitional dollars so they can do further planning to develop a long-term sustainability plan. So, I think this support is needed and I think is a good investment for the city. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Radburn. Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given, I'll be supporting this funding source.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And we're still on community growth. Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is the South Montrose Greenway construction, and that is a $2 million project. Earlier this year, the committee reviewed conceptual plans. There was a lot of review and discussion of those plans for implementation, and the committee did refer detailed, directed administration to proceed with detailed design drawings for the South Montrose concourse design, and the funding for that project is before council this afternoon, this morning. We have taken a look at potential for phasing the project, and Dan is here to present that information if council wishes.
Okay, I think that was a committee request about phasing options, so, Mr. Welton, if you want to give us an overview of that, if we can.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I'm not sure if you can see on the screen, we did a, we had our EDA collaborative do a design for the Greenway. We did ask them to consider phasing in the actual, in the design. If.
I think they're just switching. There we go.
All right, this is, this is essentially is the, the design as it currently stands. It's not the final one. We're still working out a few, like, elements. Like I said, the, we did ask the landscape architect to, to do a phased, to, to do, consider phasing. If you can just switch to that phase one drawing. This is a, this drawing here shows the phase one with the black line around it. Essentially, what it does is establishes the entire promenade from 98th to 99th Street. It includes the main plaza, landscaping benches, a patio that would serve as an outdoor component of the Teresa Sergeant Hall. What it, phase one doesn't include is the area to the south, in the southwest corner of the area, which includes a water feature, like, it's a, you know, a play feature for children essentially, and some landscaping. And the approximate budget cost for just the first phase is about 1.5 million, including contingencies at this point. If you want to go to the next one, yes. The landscape architects have also indicated that they can, they can accommodate sub-phasing in the design, and so what this does is it shows, like, phase 1A, which would again do the entire promenade, but would not include an area in the southeast corner of the site. So, the phase, the entire project is approximately 2 million. First phase is about 1.5, but it can, we can sub-phase it if necessary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Welton. Councillor Gustafson?
How much more, thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Welton, how much more might it cost us to do a sub-phasing situation?
Dan?
I don't have any, I don't have any concrete numbers for the sub-phasing. In fact, this, this phase, this 1A that they presented to us, they did not give us a budget number. It was just a demonstration of how we can sub-phase the project. My expectation would be is if we sub-phase, the overall cost would be a little higher than if it was done all at once. I can't, I can't say, I do not know what that increased cost would be if it was phased.
So, can you tell me what a little higher means?
Well, I mean, just, you're, in, if you have one construction crew doing the entire project all at once, there's this mobilization and commissioning, you know, to get out onto the site and start the work. If it was done in two or three phases, I would imagine that we would have to, you know, do that each, we would be paying extra because that would have to be done each time. But the consultants have not provided me with any specific numbers related to sub-phasing. Thank you, Mr. Welton.
Okay, so this is one of the items that's been referred from committee, and so I know that there's a variety of opinions, but if we can have a motion, and then we can discuss and debate that. Councillor Rice?
Move that we fund the Montrose, South Montrose Greenway to the tune of 1.5 million.
Okay, so, so that's essentially the phase one?
Yeah.
Solution? Okay. Discussion, debate on councillor Rice's motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does not carry, so that item won't be added. We can move on then? Anything else in, oh, sorry, community, anything else in community growth? I don't believe there is, so move on to community living?
Yeah.
Gary?
Your worship, if I could have the, actually, if I could have the community living piece put up on the screens as well?
Sure.
Your worship, the first item is the Grand Prairie Public Library expansion. The, the Grand Prairie Public Library had approached the city a year ago and during our last budget deliberations for capital funding to finish off the 3100 square foot area of the second floor of the Montrose Cultural Center. At that point in time, it was unfunded. The project really is, was, the space was used up until recently with the storage for the art gallery. It was intended as an unfinished space to be developed at a future point in time, but because of the art gallery construction, the space was used by the art gallery for their storage needs. The space would include some meeting room or programming areas, as well as a safe space for additional staff, including the art gallery, or the library staff and a small workstation area for city staff at their work at the Montrose Cultural Center. The primary reason behind the library's request is that they've had such significant growth in their programming and their attendance, that they are at, running at very high capacity right now, and they believe that it's important for them to continue, continue their operations. The overall cost of this project is $452,000. Excuse me, the library is asking for $200,000 to be funded by the city. $125,000 would be funded from other sources, as in grants. The library would also contribute approximately $70,000 of their own funds and relying on the remainder $57,000 from donations from the community. So, it is a funding source, or it includes a wide variety of funding sources, and the library also indicates that if the city were to put, support this project, it would also, could better enable them to leverage other funds in terms of grants and so on.
Okay, thanks very much. Gary, councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Roth, could you entertain me on, you know, how much cash will this $200,000 investment generate?
Mr. Roth? Sorry, councillor Gustafson, how do you mean?
Are they renting the room out, or they?
You're talking about operational revenue from the space?
Yeah.
Sure. Mr. Roth, do you have that type of information?
Just, if you bear with me for one moment. Your worship, the library hasn't indicated that specifically. They did, they do indicate that in 2011, as an example, their room rental revenues have increased by approximately $7,000 from their existing rentals. The challenge that the library, as I understand it, has is that they also need to balance rentals with their own programming needs, and their, some of their programming needs is also, are also being hampered or deterred because of other bookings for, for other functions.
Okay, so I see a whole bunch of people in the queue. I have a feeling that once we have a motion, there'll also be a whole bunch of people in the queue, so maybe we could have a motion, and then we can have a discussion, debate and questions on the motion. So, the first person on my list is councillor Rice. Could you, you know, if you're, if.
I'll, I'll, I'll speak after the motion.
Okay, so, and then, sure, sure. So, if that's okay with the others that are in the queue, councillor O'Toole?
I'm on.
Councillor O'Toole, if you want.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I am in support of this, and I would like to make a motion that the city of Grand Prairie fund $200,000 as requested.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, so discussion and debate on the motion. Thanks very much for that, council. We can sort of do that in a little bit better order. Councillor Rice?
Oops, I'm just wondering if, again, timing, we just hired a brand-new librarian. I guess I would be interested in a vision that the new librarian might bring to that space, so I'm just wondering if the timing is not the most effective.
Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. To community living Gary, will that, will there be an effect on our per capita funding? Like, it's $70 or whatever now. Will that be increased to all people that are donating or paying?
Mr. Roth?
I don't believe that there would be any impacts on the library funding.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion and debate? I'll be supporting the motion. I think this is a good opportunity to finish that space. We have always foreseen that it would be for library expansion. I think we're actually a number of years already. I think we sort of envisioned that it would be about five years before they need it, and we're essentially there. I think this is a good opportunity to help fulfill the library board's strategic plan, which the board has developed and actually speaks about enhancing their community programming, so I think it'll give them that space. Thanks for that, council. I see councillor O'Toole and councillor Wong in the queue. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to start off with saying that the programming that's being done at the library involves all ages, from preschool to seniors, all walks of life. We have people that are learning a second language. The resources for that specific area has increased dramatically. The library staff have put up with some roadblocks in the past with the construction of the art gallery, dealing with some of the situations that are there. They're not overstaffed by any means, but they are sharing a lot of space, and it gets very congested. With this expansion, there'll be obviously more room to work and offering of more programs in a less confined area. As for councillor Rice's concern, I think that, and I feel, that knowing as a new- As for Counselor Rice's concern, I think that, and I feel, that knowing as a new librarian coming in, the library director, and knowing that something is going forward as program is in place, would be an opportunity for her to have some impact if the construction is a go-ahead. Further than that, there's 260,000-plus people that are going to the library for one reason or another, and they are using the library. You can go over there at 10 o'clock in the morning, or at 7 o'clock at night, and there are people in there. I would really like to see the support on this. And one other thing, it is, I think, we look around the city, and we've got lots of roads that aren't finished. I understand that. Sidewalks that aren't completed. And we have this building that isn't completed. I'd like to see this building completed. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Okay. Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion. I think Counselor O'Toole and Mayor Given have told us most of the reasons why we should be supporting it. For me, it's the fact that the public library has seen such an explosion in usage, and that's something that's unique for libraries because education just doesn't seem to be the, the top priority for kids these days. And to see a trend going upward in that area, I think that that's just phenomenal. The space right now is being used as storage, which is kind of a shame because it is a large space. To be able to use that for additional programming when they're being squeezed on their space, I think is a good use of the funds. And the fact that we're leveraging our dollars for this project means that if we don't put it in now, those funds will probably be spent another way, and, you know, next time they come to the table, it would be probably for an ask for the entire amount.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was at the committee when they came forward from the library on this one, and originally I was not for it, but I asked them about the greenway, and what was very important in this library expansion inside the building to them was number one for them. So that, that changed my mind right there, and since, so I will be supporting this one.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Gary, I guess you've got a, you've got a longer list. Mr. Roth?
Your worship, the next item is the Rotary House Warming Shelter. The Rotary House, or the Wapiti Community Dorm Society, representing the Rotary House, had approached community social development, and was brought, later brought to a community development committee, on continuing to provide a warming center at the Rotary House. This is really a warming center for those involved in the MAT intoxic program, and the city already provides transit services, supports them by providing transit services for clients to move over to Rotary House at the end of the night, so that they could be able to, to take part of that service. The, the challenge that Rotary House is having is the existing layout of space requires the MAT Intox clients to use the same entrance way as regular, the regular clients for Rotary House, and that does create a number of staffing and security issues and congestion at that entrance way. Rotary House is wanting to move forward with some renovations to create a separate entrance and create, move some other features to make it more efficient in the, the first floor area. Their projected total cost is $224,000 that they would be wanting to spend, but, or asking for the city to contribute 45,000 as part of, as part of our contributions towards that project. Really, our contributions are primarily to change the entrance, to create a new entrance for the MAT Intox program. As of yesterday, the city, we've also been informed that he, there is some grant reconciliation that needs to be, occur between affordable housing grant dollars from the Rotary House, and we understand that the Rotary House does need to repay us some funds of approximately $100,000 not to, and that is typical because we have to do this with a number of these types of projects. There is a possibility that, if that grant funding is, is paid back, we could reapply that towards this renovation as well. But it is, it is an issue that we haven't received confirmation from the Wapiti Dorm Society because it is a very recent development.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much. Again, counsel, I think ideally we start off with a motion, and to conclude this, and then we can have a discussion, debate, and questions around that motion. So Counselor Crokin, you're first in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd like to make that motion that we approve the $45,000 for Rotary House Warming Shelter.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Discussion and debate on the motion. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was at the committee as well with this when they came forward from the Rotary House, and what sold me on it, I never shed a tear about some individuals that alcohol or drugs, adults, who was actually having an extra entrance so that they keep them away from the children that actually live there as well. And I think that's number one what sold me, because don't need youth that are in that building for circumstances that are out of their control, and I think this is why it's good to have another entrance and get them in a, through a different entrance to have a warming shelter, which is basically let them cool down or whatever till they move on. So right now, they're just using one entrance, so everybody's mingling through that entrance, which I do believe, unless Gary can ask if it's one entrance?
Mr. Roth?
Yes, your worship, they are currently using one entrance to access the building, so I support.
Thanks. Counselor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I was at the committee meeting. Can somebody just tell me what a warming shelter consists of?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, when the temperature reaches, or the outside temperature reaches a predetermined amount, usually it's, I believe it's a minus 20, minus 30 range. A warming shelter is available, opened up and made available for people, under any circumstance, to come in, spend the night, to be, have a warm place, with no questions asked about their sobriety and those, those types of things, where people may not be accepted into other programs within our community because of perhaps intoxication or detoxification issues.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. What's the capacity of that building? What's the, or what's the usage? Is it full all the time? Is it empty? What, how much room is left available? Is there, is it all full? Is it being used to its capacity? Where, where are we at with, with that on that building? And the programs that they have there?
Your worship, the, the regular capacity of the Rotary House averages out in last year to 89% full of capacity. Because the MAT Intox program is only operating at certain times, when the, the temperature falls below certain, certain, certain amounts, that does change the capacity in the wintertime. In the wintertime, they have had, they, there are times where they are beyond 100% capacity because if you add the MAT Intox program into their capacity level, it carries them well beyond what, what they have for numbers.
So Gary, I understand that this is going to be a seasonal, this will be a seasonal room or shelter, or whatever we're calling it. What, how are they going to utilize the space for the rest of the year?
Just give, perhaps I could just have a moment?
Sure. So while Mr. Roth finds the answer to that question, we'll move on. In the queue here, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will, I will certainly be supporting this motion. There are some times when you have to invest in capital adjustments, shall we say, to make operations much better.
Sorry, Counselor Radburn, somebody decided that they were going to touch their thing and threw off our queue, and you're off.
Further to what Counselor McCain said, not only with, not only with children, I think this...
Somebody else decided to touch the... Counselor Radburn?
I'm going to get a tear in my eye, but it won't be because of the consternation of deciding how to vote like some of my colleagues. Anyway, this will really help, I guess, those who are using the Rotary Shelter, is interact in a more respectful manner, and will help ease the, the work, hard work of staff presently. So for me, it's, it's about making a change to the building so the operations can run more smoothly. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Mr. Roth, do you have some additional information for us?
I do have some additional information. So the MAT program, the intended space is currently an undeveloped area, and there's a, that's currently, there's a small maintenance shop area that's connected to that, and right now, it's predominantly being used for storage when the MAT program isn't in operation because there are things needed for the MAT program, and also donations that come in that support that program. In the future, all the, their renovations is to create a new entrance and to create some walls to separate the area from the small maintenance area. It will continue to be, have to house storage items for the MAT program throughout the remainder of the year, as well as potential storage of personal belongings and those types of things for other clients, so that would just get moved out of that area when the MAT, the nights that the MAT program is in effect.
Okay. Okay. So we have Counselor Crokin's motion on the floor still. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody else in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I did, so I've had a request if we maybe take a little bit of a break. How's counsel feel about that, maybe, opportunity now to take a little bit of a, a break in the program here? We'll go for, we're going to go for just a few minutes, and we'll come back at 10:30. So, Counselor Rice?
Because of the system we're using in terms of putting a motion forward for each item, I wonder if it would be possible to relax the rules. The rules are if you make a motion, you can vote against it, but you can't speak against it. But in view of the system we're using, I wonder if we could maybe relax that.
Well, I think if, yeah, you know, I think if, there's, there's many council members, and so if you feel strongly that you need to speak against a motion, then, then don't make it, I would say. If there's somebody else that perhaps would vote against it, but doesn't feel strongly that they need to speak against it, then I'd ask that, that they be the ones that make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So we'll take our break, and we'll be back at 10:30. Okay, welcome back. Thanks, everybody, for that little break. We are in the middle of community living referral items. Gary, I think you're still on for, geez, a couple slides at least. Mr. Roth?
That's great. Thank you, your worship. The next item was the, a request, or actually two requests from the Grand Prairie Performing Arts Guild. The first request was for capital funding to help support their, some changes to their building. Of course, they are housed at the, they call it the, sorry, the Showcase Center, which is the old St. Joe's Catholic Church building. Their request for capital assistance is to, to, for funding towards a LED light grading system, a fly tower, and some door window upgrades to the building. They're asking for $36,000, $36,311 from the city. They're also seeking provincial grant funding for another $48,830 towards their project. Essentially, that's all the information that I have at this point in time on that particular capital request.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Roth. Counselor Rice?
I would move that motion.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Rice. Discussion debate on the motion, and we're talking at this point about the capital.
Could I speak to it? Grand Prairie really has a very proud history of support for the cultural component of our community. And as you know, we had been working rather diligently preparing an application to be declared the cultural capital of Canada. And then the federal government
Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote.
canceled that program, but it doesn't diminish the work and the identification of the elements
That motion carries. I did, so I've had a request if we maybe take a little bit of
that went into that preparation, which stand us very strongly, a very strong cultural component. And I feel this just adds another cog in terms of our quest to provide an all-over
a break. How's council feel about that, maybe opportunity now to take a little bit of a break in the program here? We'll go for, we're gonna go for just a few minutes
experience for our citizens.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor Crokin? and we'll come back at 10:30.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Gary, be able to tell us if us helping them fund, will that
Counselor Rice?
Because of the system we're using in terms of putting a motion forward for each
help them get the provincial grants that they require?
item, I wonder if it would be possible to relax the rules. The rules are if you make Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes, it is my understanding that they would require the city's funding to leverage
a motion, you can vote against it, but you can't speak against it. But in view of the
the provincial grants.
Thank you.
system we're using, I wonder if we could maybe relax that.
Further discussion or debate on the motion? Well, I think if, yeah, you know, I think if, there's many council members, and so Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. if you feel strongly that you need to speak against a motion, then don't make it, I'd Thank you. And we've got one more. Thank you. And that motion carries. Mr. Roth, I say. If there's somebody else that perhaps would vote against it, but doesn't feel strongly guess there's the second portion? that they need to speak against it, then I'd ask that they be the ones that make the motion.
That is correct, your worship. The Performing Arts, Grand Prairie Performing Arts Guild
Okay.
has also asked for $123,426 of operational funding. This is actually to be spread over
Okay. Okay, so we'll take our break. We'll be back at 10:30.
a four-year period based on rent and utility assistance. During that four-year period, they estimate that they will actually be spending $338,000 on rent and utilities, and they're just asking for some assistance. The actual breakdown of requests that they are asking for in 2013 is $45,990. In 2014, $36,801.
Sorry, Gary, so just because we're talking about 2013 today, so the 2013 number is, again?
$45,990. And I was just going to highlight the numbers for the next three years, just so you could show that it's a diminishing amount of request.
Sure.
2014 is $36,801. 15 is $25,110. And 16 is $15,525.
Thanks very much.
So it is a diminishing request over the, over the four-year time period.
Okay. Discussion again, counsel, if we can start with a motion to include. I see the first in my queue is Counselor McLean. Counselor McLean, would you be ready to make that motion include?
Yes, Mayor Given, I'd like to include the, for 2013 budget, $45,990 for the operating fund of Grand Prairie Performing Arts. I'd like to speak to it as well.
Okay, please.
Originally, I was not in favor, but in this area, since they moved in, they changed how it's been working. It's really changed the area. And they're really doing some wonderful things there. And you can actually walk through in the evening, and a couple years ago, it was kinda scary. So for that alone, number one, and number two, they are doing some amazing shows, and it's another venue. And it also, number three, it shows a depleting. They're getting better as they go on. And so I look forward to supporting it. And the reason I need to go with capital, we don't own the building.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Rice?
I'm supporting Counselor McLean's motion. I am because this is one of those that if we don't support it, could come back at us in a different direction. Certainly, them moving into that facility has proved very advantageous to the community village. And it has allowed the community village to be stronger. If we don't support this, then I would not be surprised to see the community village come at us for money, so.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. I'll add that I'm going to be supporting this motion. I appreciate the fact that they're a community group that has come forward with a declining request. And I believe, if I remember from their committee presentation, they're gonna also be making a similar request to other regional municipalities. So those are the reasons that I'll be supporting it. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does not carry. Okay. So we'll move on to Community Foundation Vital Signs. Mr. Roth?
Your worship, the Vital Signs Project is a project where a community steering committee, which is actually led by the Community Foundation, produces a report that provides a snapshot of our community. And it looks at a variety of issues that, what is included in the report is somewhat steered by the steering committee. Steering Committee is made up of a wide range of agencies and, and boards from across the community. And it does provide valuable resources for, for the city administration, primarily community social development and recreation areas to provide, to use, to know where we're at and what residents in our community are thinking of Grand Prairie. The request is for $25,000 for the production of the 2013 Vital Signs Report. Work would be starting early in the year to present and develop that report and unveil it in the fall. The $25,000, as I understand it, is only part of the funding that the Community Foundation requires, and they do secure funding from other sources for that. The remainder of their funding, although I don't have the exact breakdown on the total costs, the city did provide funding for the 2011 Vital Signs Report through, some funding through the Community Social Development Department in the past. But that funding is, has been reallocated to other agencies for this current cycle.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Roth. Counselor Rice, you're first in the queue.
Is it done every two years or every year?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, it, the steering committee has decided to do this every two years, although I am aware that right now, the Community Foundation is working on a much smaller project of a youth Vital Signs Report, where they're actually doing a similar project with a youth focus and very much smaller scale.
So this would not be eligible for FCSS funding?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, it is, there is eligibility for, it is eligible for FCSS funding, although the FCSS funds have all been allocated for the 2013 year.
Thank you.
Let's see, Counselor McLean. Again, counsel, looking to introduce a motion, then we can have discussion and debate on the motion. Counselor McLean?
I just had a question for Gary on this one, because I would like to change it if the motion's made. A friendly amendment, if I could. Did the county come involved in this? Because I hear it was just the city, but this is more of a regional base of children. And this wouldn't be just the city, this would be our region. So Gary, did the county or any green view come in on any funding on this at all?
Mr. Roth?
I'm, I'm not certain as to the funding level that their regional partners provided in 2011 for the Vital Signs Project. The Vital Signs Steering Committee, although there are some regional elements that do come into that, I was sitting on the steering committee, I know that it was very specifically geared towards the city of Grand Prairie as much as possible, as much as we could keep the, keep the survey and the questions and so on directed around the city's, city's issues.
Okay. Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm gonna move that we fund this project. I found the information really useful the last time the Community Vital Signs was produced. And I think it's really important that we continue to support this for a number of years, just so we can see a trend in terms of how the statistics change from, from one report to another. You know, there was useful information, and it, there does need to be some lag time between doing these reports so we can see how the community reacts to the information. But I think that the information is useful to not only the city, but to everyone that runs an organization in the city, because they use that information to adjust their business plans.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Wong. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm, I will be supporting this motion this time. I did not last time because I felt it was quite generic, and we already have our own data from our, our own city survey every couple of years. So I don't support this because it's something we should continue to, continue to fund. I think that we look at their focus each time they do it to see if it would inform us and help us. In this year's case, I like the, I like the data being relative to our 15 to 24-year-old. So I think that information will be very useful for us. So for that, for that reason, I'll support it this year.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. I'd just like a question to ask David Olenger, if I could.
Mr. Olenger, okay. What's your question, Counselor O'Toole?
In our surveys that we do with the city, would there be any overlapping information that we already know at this point in time that they would be surveying and getting the same responses?
Mr. Olenger?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor O'Toole, most of the questioning in the citizen satisfaction survey is related specifically to city services, infrastructure, and how our tax dollar is spent. There's certainly some opportunity for connectedness, but in general, most of the questions have to do with the, the actual city servicing and how we use our funding and, and that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor O'Toole, okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Mr. Roth?
Your worship, the next item is the South Bear Creek Ball Diamond Rehabilitation. As you know, the South Bear Creek Ball Diamond is owned by the city, has, city has a maintenance agreement with South Peace Ball Association since 1990 to operate the facility. At a very recent inspection or review of the facilities, it was found that there was significant safety concerns that need to be addressed, primarily to be able to, enable the city to host some significant events, such as the 2013 Native Fastball Championships that we'll be hosting this summer. On October 1st, council had approved approximately $240,000 to be spent on some, immediately this fall, to be spent on some land leveling and some other pieces of that project. The whole estimated cost of the project was approximately $500,000, with South Peace Ball providing a small amount towards that from their, their funding sources. The remaining funding request is approximately $250,000. That would be, help us to be able to complete the remainder of the safety-related improvements. This includes repairs to the grandstand area, as well as fencing and, and repairs to bleachers and so on that are, that were identified as, as safety issues to help ensure that we're in the best possible shape to be able to host events in the future.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ms. Roth. Now, the presentation, I think, lists this as, it says funded, but that's administration's recommendation to fund. We still need a motion by council to make that change active in the, in the budget. So Counselor Crokin is first in the queue?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move that we fund the South Bear Creek Ball Diamond Rehabilitation in the amount of $250,650.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Discussion debate, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was going to make the motion as well. I fully support administration's recommendation in this regard. This is an investment in our very, most important baseball, fast pitch, fast pitch, slow pitch facility. And I just, we needed to do the diamond work, which we did in '12. And I think we need to do the safety bleacher. And most of this money, Gary, I believe, is for the diamonds, the main diamonds on the east side of the roadway. And so I think that they need to, hosting the, the native championships is, is important, but for ongoing use and safety of those who are participating and using the facility, this, this investment is required, I believe. Thank you.
Counselor Rice?
So let me just, this is already in, it doesn't become part of the $998,000 or whatever.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, it is funded after a capital fund.
Okay.
So, so this doesn't reduce our flexibility with regard to other items, I guess, is kind of the question. Yeah. Okay. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm not closing on it if there's other comments, but we've, we've had recognition from across the province there. We had two major fundraisers there. We had two major fundraisers there for batting, for a cure for breast cancer, and Topco Oil, president out of Calgary, was there and commented on what a great ball diamonds we do have, owned by the city. And we also dedicated one of our diamonds to Sean Wallace, who is also a, a great community builder, and I believe was on Team Canada. And Director Gary had already mentioned the, the native champ, the native competition we're having there this coming spring. So, I urge councillors to support this.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm looking forward to this, because I think it's the start of revitalizing that area. Since I moved to the city of Grand Prairie '91, not much has really happened. There has been a BMX track and a few other things moved around, but basically the ball diamonds, the campground, but also we actually have a music festival there, the only one outside, East Coast Garden Party. And so, this area is very important to our city, and there's talk about our future annexation, but we have areas within our city that maybe it's been 20 or 35 years since anything's happened. I think this is gonna come back to play down the road, so I'm, I'm forward with it.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Okay. Gary, so we're on to next.
Your worship, the, the next item pertains to the Community Knowledge Campus Sports Field Development Project. The, with the, the start of construction with the Community Knowledge Campus High School at that location, and as part of the, the development process for that, we now know that there will not be provincial funding for sports field development that is connected to that high school, the project. The Scores Technical Committee has started some planning work on working together to look at what are the, both the school needs and community needs for sport and recreation in and around that, that area. This project was identified as being the first, one of the first initial steps towards a, for a finished site. The initial, this project would involve doing some initial design work and some site grading only, to move the, the significant amount of soil material that's on the site, level it off, and be prepared to move forward in, in a future point in time with actual field development. At the same time, the Scores Technical Committee is, has, has agreed to work together to identify what sport needs would be needed, and look at the whole CKC site, and make sure that we're accommodating not only the high schools at that location, but also any other sport groups that may have needs in our community.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Roth. I see Counselor Monroe first in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that we fund $350,000 to the CKC sports field. And just to speak briefly on that, Mayor Given, although it's unfortunate that we were unable to get any provincial funding for development of, of the field, I think that it is essential that we complete the project out at, at the CKC. You know, having a school go up and not have a sports field anywhere or available for anyone to use would, would truly be unfortunate, and I just think that this is inevitable, that we're gonna have to start working on it. I would think that if we start sooner rather than later, that it would benefit us in the long run.
Thanks, Counselor Monroe. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Oh, sorry, Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have to speak against this motion. I think that we have a lot of challenges in this budget, and I feel that this is something that could be put into the next budget cycle. It's gonna be a couple of years before the school's completed there, and it gives us a little bit of time to, to plan and prepare that site.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Wong. I'm gonna speak in support of the motion. I, I think that there's some site prep work that needs to happen. My experience in other city projects where there's, grass ends up being planted, you've got a couple of year lead time to be able to, to let that get established before a field is ready for use. And so, I think that doing the site work in 2013 will be important. Ultimately, we probably won't see construction of whatever's gonna be on that site until 20, sorry, 2013 to do the site prep, 2014 to do construction of whatever's gonna be on that site, and you probably will need a year or two at least for the, the fields to take hold before they can actually be utilized by the, the coming school. So, in terms of timing, I think it's appropriate, and I'm, I'm willing to support the motion. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will also be supporting the motion for the reasons cited. Yeah, this is just to get the, get the dirt out of there, and leveled, and available to do something. So, this is just a initial start. So, we, we need to get at it. The school's gonna open 2014. We're not gonna have probably the fields ready, but let's at least be ready so that we can look at funding what's gonna be on those fields. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Okay. Gary, do you have any little things left on your list?
Your worship, I may have a couple more. The next item was the request from the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum, or Dinosaur Initiative, to, to provide an additional $2 million in, in funding for the society towards the capital project of constructing the museum.
Okay. Okay. So, I think everybody's fairly familiar with the project, so I'd look for a motion to introduce it. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given. I'd like to make that motion that we support this, and I'd also like to make the motion in regards to supporting it over a period of five years, the $2 million.
So, would it be $400,000 in 2013? So, $400,000 per year for five years?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, Counselor O'Toole's going to make that motion to add $400,000 per year for five years to the city's budget? Discussion and debate, Counselor Rice?
This is over and above the $1 million that we have in there over three years, so we would be increasing that to $733 a year. $733,000?
No, the, the, if the city's previous contribution was $1.5 million, $500,000 of that, I believe, has already been advanced, and so there's $1 million that is already budgeted for from previous years and basically sitting in the bank account waiting. So, there's a million dollars sitting, waiting to be forwarded, should the project be going ahead.
Capital shows seven, $333 a year.
Mr. Anderson, do you want to speak to that?
That's correct. There is $1 million, and it's funded over three years, so it is $333 per year.
So, then it would be $733 per year?
Correct.
For three years?
Yeah, four, okay.
But the balance has already been budgeted for by previous councils. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is one of the big additions to our budget, and it was between, well, there, there was a few items that I was looking at, that I was thinking could be funded through some kind of venture. I think that it helps to spread the costs out, and it helps to especially push that cost forward to generations that will be enjoying that facility. So, if there was some way, I don't know if administration can do this or not, but if there was some way to maybe take our total contribution and spread that out over 10 years, and borrow on behalf of the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum, I'd prefer to see support in that fashion. So, that's my question to administration. Can that be done? And what would the cost be?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, we could borrow $2 million and repay it over 10 years. I'd have to look at the cost, I don't have them right at hand.
I will be supporting Counselor O'Toole's motion. And speaking to that, I believe that this project is, is, there are other partners that are, the major partner in this project. I believe that if there's ongoing borrowing and interest costs that, that, should they choose to, they should step up and handle that. I believe the city of Grand Prairie should give a flat amount, and that's why I'd support the, the $2 million over five years. Additionally, I think that this is the type of project that Grand Prairie's known for, in that we've decided as a region and as a community that this is something that we desire, and at a level that we want to see it, and is probably, probably more than other people across the province would expect to find when they come to Grand Prairie. But I believe that that's how we, that's traditionally how we do things here. Residents in our area have certain expectations, and I think that the museum will live up to those. We've found out now that it's gonna fall on the local communities to really support the initiative if we wanna see it go forward. And I believe that this will be an investment in diversifying our regional economy over time, as it will bring additional research capability and opportunity, as well as obviously the, the tourism facet, which is most often cited, but, so I'd certainly support for the motion. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, just to speak.
If you wanna touch your microphone there?
Just to speak on that once again, Mayor Given, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again. The museum will create 49, excuse me, 49 full-time positions annually. There'll be approximately 322-person years of employment during the construction. The Grand Prairie area, the city of Grand Prairie will benefit. In the winter months, the hotels are pretty much full to near capacity. In the summer months, we don't see that, and this is where the, the Dinosaur Museum will be able to benefit the city by having increased visitorship through tourism. With that spinoff, we have the restaurateurs, we have the shopping that's taking place. So, does the city benefit from this? Absolutely. And I would also like to let you know that the tourism in the city, or in the province of Alberta, is actually down quite a bit this year, but in the dinosaur world, and we're considering Dinosaur Park, the Jurassic Park near Edmonton, and the Royal Tyrrell Museum, have increased by 24% in 2012. It's a tourist destination that people wanna see. We will be having visitors from all over the world. We've already had visitors from all over the world, just at the bone beds. And this is the time to make the decision, we either go for it, or we back off. There is a timeline that's very important, and that is in the early spring, that we need the funding by. We need direction. The, the IMAX Corporation has picked Grand Prairie, Wembley area, right next to the, the Dinosaur Museum, to establish the state-of-the-art IMAX theater. So, that's only three IMAXs in all of Alberta, we would be getting the newest technology. They are waiting for a decision, do we build or don't we? There's a number of other contributors that are waiting to see, once the building gets started, then they will jump on board. They've said that, but they don't wanna donate to something that isn't there. And I would just like to say that we'll probably end up having a, a very large increase in tourism, and to, please, support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
So, should this project proceed, at what year do we anticipate they'll come back at us for operational support?
The, so, Counselor O'Toole, as our representative on the, the initiative board, Counselor O'Toole can speak that?
Thank you very much. Counselor Rice, the county of Grand Prairie has said they would cover operational costs, and with that being said, there are pe, there are corporations, companies, that have said, you build it, we'll make sure that it gets maintained. We will make sure that it gets fully funded.
In writing.
That's what I understand.
Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I would really like to see this project go forward as well. I think that this is the last swing that anyone's gonna have at, at building the museum, because the costs are escalating at a rate that they won't be able to keep up with the fundraising levels. I believe there's gonna be major economic development spinoff from a project like this. It's gonna bring a lot of people to this region. The, a good example of that is what's happened in Drumheller. Drumheller has a population of right around 5,000 people, but in the summer, that place is absolutely packed. It's a bustling community. It's a, it's a community of 5,000 that has a Walmart and a Canadian Tire, and, and, you know, a, a whole bunch of chain stores, and that's just to serve the tourists that, that are there. I do wanna see less of an impact on our budget, though, so I'm gonna make an amendment to the motion, and I'd like to see our, because we have still $666,670, $67,000 that hasn't been paid out yet, so I'd like to see our entire contribution of $2.67 million roughly, spread out over that five years. And so, I would amend the motion to read instead of $2 million, $2.67 million, or $2, $2,666,667,000, spread out over five years. And that, that would, in essence, only increase this budget by $200,000 instead of $400,000.
I'm just trying to decide, I know that can, Mr. Anderson wanted to be in the queue here, I think, and so I don't know if you have a comment on that, I'm just trying to say, I mean, Ken, do you have a comment on that?
Well, I was just gonna answer Counselor Wong's original question about borrowing $2, $2 million over a 10-year period. The cost would be $223,000 per year, so over the 10-year term, you would have $236,000 in interest costs.
Okay. So, that, that question's passed. I don't think Counselor Wong, you're proposing that still, so basically saying that, that the contribution that the city had made previously, including that in the, the go-forward portion, is that right, Counselor Wong?
That's right, because we do have two installments that haven't been paid out yet, and this way, it just makes it five even installments.
Mr. Anderson, have the, have the previous, the previous installments, will they have any, can you sort of speak to that concept, or?
They're already MSI-funded.
Mr. Anderson?
They are MSI-funded, and they are conditional, conditional on moving to a construction phase, so nothing has been released to the Dinosaur Museum at this point from the $1 million.
Okay. So, Counselor Wong, I guess I'll, I'll take your motion to be in order, and we'll ask those in the queue to speak on Counselor Wong's motion to take the city's contribution, including the amounts previously dedicated, and spread it over five years. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would accept that motion and, and drop mine.
No, it's an amendment to your motion. Counselor Wong has made, and so, so you're supportive, obviously, of Counselor.
I'll accept that amendment.
Okay. Counselor Radburn?
I think we're getting into what administration does better than us. Once we make some decisions, they advise us as to how to best fund it. My thoughts on funding this particular was to, we have flexibility in, in our MSI monies, so why are we borrowing for this project? And, but I would want to hear administration's recommendation at the end of the day, as to how we look at the, how we fund the total of our decisions. And so, before I, yeah, before I even would vote on that, well, I probably will vote against the amendment, because I would wait to see what administration has to say first. We can always look at that if we don't agree with, with administration's recommendation, but, yeah. While I have the floor, well, no. Yeah, I guess it's, it's not, no, it's not on the, on the amendment, so I'll, I'll reserve other comments. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Bottom line, let's wait for, to see what administration recommends.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. I, I'm also gonna speak against the amendment. I support making the $2 million additional contribution. I, I just believe councils should make their motions at, I mean, basically what we're saying, we want a total of X amount of dollars, including previous contributions, and we wanna spread that out over a period of time, I think, exactly as Counselor Radburn said probably more eloquently. I think administration will give us the best plan of how to do that, but council's at that level. The council motion is, do we add $2 million over a period of time, or do we not? And administration can make recommendations on how best to do that, if council chooses to go ahead. So, I, I won't support the motion, but I will support the original motion for the $2 million over five years. Counselor Rice?
How much MSI money do we have left over, that we haven't used all up, or planned to use all up this year, or? to use all up, this year or next year with the renewal of it?
Mr Anderson?
Well, at the end of 2013, I believe we have two million dollars, but there, I'd have to check with Dawn on what the ending balance is for 2014.
You haven't, and you haven't included that in the figures you gave us this morning.
I think Mr Anderson told us that amount at the outset, how much MSI that we would have, he showed us the fund balances and-
Yes.
Well, but I-
Ken's looking to pull it up on the screen above. councillor Rice? Mr Anderson, if you want to just go through that section?
With the recommended actions we've made in these administration recommendations, it sits at two point two million dol-
Sorry, Ken, just, yeah, I was just going to ask for that table back up on screen, so councillor can reference it. Thanks.
So after reflecting the administration recommendations, there's a balance of two point two million dollars at the end of 2013.
And then we'll get more in 2014. No, we'll get-
We'll get more in 2014, but council's already approved the capital budget for 2014 as well.
So, some of our 2014 money that we expect to get is already dedicated to other projects in our future years?
But, but not all of it.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's why we're asking.
So, just while administration's looking at that, again councillor, I think this is where we say, are we providing an additional two million dollars, or other amount, or not? And then administration will give us a recommendation on what fits in with our capital plan that we've previously approved for future years too, so I think that's the challenge there. Mr Anderson, do you have some additional information?
Yes, once we reflect the activity for 2014 that council's approved, the ending balance for MSI is two point five million dollars.
Okay, okay, can I see councillor McLean in the queue?
Thank you Mayor Given, I think we might be jumping a little bit ahead with talking with the MSI right now, I understand where councillor Abern's going, but I'm looking at other areas, giving room to administration, and if some MSI was used, I'd be looking at reduction, not adding, but I think we're jumping ahead here.
So we're still on the amendment, councillor Wong?
Coming on, so I'll just turn it on. Mayor Given, I was wondering, see, the reason why I came up with that funding strategy was because the original motion actually specifies that the money would be paid out over the same time period, so I'm willing to rescind my motion to amend. I guess, with the understanding that the original motion would probably just be to fund two million dollars with administration's recommendation on how, how that could best be done.
Well, I mean, there's a difference between funding, if council's direction is to fund two million dollars of new money, I mean, this is, this is the essence, two million dollars of new money in a single year, administration would come up with significantly different strategies to do that than two million dollars of new money over five years. So, I mean, that, they do need some direction on that, are we doing it in a single-year commitment? Well, councillor O'Toole's motion was for two million dollars over a multi-year period, two million dollars of new money over a multi-year period. Council could choose to say, "No, we want to do two million dollars all in one year." That would have a significant difference in how administration would change, would address that. Bringing previous year's commitments is, is, I mean, council's already made that commitment for the previous year's money, and so administration's strategy would be to say, "We've got that sitting waiting, and so we'll just add it in future years." I mean, so I think we need to keep this at the level of, is council putting in additional money or not? Are we doing that additional money over a multi-year period or not? And then administration will identify the best way to do that. So councillor Wong, up to you, whether you choose to withdraw your motion, or we can vote on that.
Okay, well, it just seems like my, it still sounds to me like my amendment was very similar to the original request, except that it just rolled our entire commitment into, into a multi-year period, and that was my intent.
Okay, okay.
So I'll, I'll let the amendment stand.
Stand, okay, okay. So, any further discussion or debate on councillor Wong's motion to amend? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Okay, so that motion to amend does not carry, so councillor O'Toole's original motion still stands, of four hundred thousand dollars a year, so a multi-year commitment to a total of two million dollars, so a five-year commitment to a total of two million dollars. Discussion or debate on the original motion. councillor Radburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. So I am supporting, I'm supporting the motion. I think these are, this is one of the examples, and they come from time to time, where regional partnership is vital, and it develops that regional capacity where our region can benefit. There's no doubt in my mind that Grand Prairie will benefit from this. The three million, at the end of the day, no, it isn't, it's three and a half million? Three and a half million that we're going to contribute at the end of the day, I think is significant, but given the thirty-some million dollar project, I think it's reasonable. I do think it will also enhance the one, two tourism punch of the museum and the Eastlink Centre. I absolutely believe that our, our revenues in the city generally, and in city operations, will, will see the benefit of this investment. So, I'm supportive. I am, I am concerned, though, I, I wonder if we need, and I'll seek the advice of the mayor, do we need to amend the motion to say, upon beginning construction, do we want to look at the same proviso we've had for our initial one and a half million? So I ask that as a question, to the chair at this point, just to see if we-
I mean, certainly-
Our other motion for the one point five included something like that, so I'm just wondering if it would be-
Well, I mean, the original motion came from a council two terms ago, and didn't include a proviso like that. The past, the last council, or this one, added that about advancing those funds.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, and so, I mean, certainly if we wanted to, if there wanted to be a motion to amend, councillor O'Toole's motion to add a contingent upon commencement of construction, that would be in order, if somebody wanted to make that. I don't see, I mean, we've done it in the past, so I don't see why not. councillor Abern, would you-
I'll make that amendment, please.
Okay, so-
Contingent upon commencement of-
Commencement of construction. Okay, okay, so councillor Radburn is moving an amendment to councillor O'Toole's motion, so the motion would be to fund two million dollars of new funds, over a five-year period, contingent upon the commencement of construction of the museum. Okay, so everybody's clear on that one? Discussion or debate on councillor Radburn's motion? I see there's a number of people here on councillor Abern's motion. councillor McLean?
No, Mayor Given, I do not want to debate on this one, I want to directly go to the one before, let's just vote on this and-
Then you can take your name out of the queue, and if there's nobody in the queue, then we'll vote on councillor Radburn's motion. And that motion carries, okay, so we're back to the original motion, councillor O'Toole's, as amended, which is now two million dollars over five years, contingent upon constructions, commencement of construction. councillor Crokin?
Thanks Mayor Given, I won't be supporting this, I never supported the first motion on the first one and a half million being over three years. I want to see some federal participation until I would even entertain it. More people are going to come to our regional hospital and our Eastlink Centre than they are going to come to this, whenever it's built, in five years or whatever. Thank you.
councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given, be opposed to this, and a few factors of this, I do believe in region, and working together even more strongly, but as a city taxpayer, my house, certain square footage is five thousand, I can get almost double, right on the border that they call county, if it's urban, I cannot support this, we're paying way more taxes than the city, and this takes away a lot of leeway that we can work to maybe bring the numbers down. If we're a region, then we've got to work more region, be more equitable, but right now, city taxpayers are paying through the nose on this, and most of them are, and I cannot support this.
Okay, thanks councillor McLean. So, is there anybody further that would like, that hasn't had a chance to be in the queue and speak to this motion, that would like to, because I see councillor O'Toole's here? If there's nobody else that'd like to speak to the motion, then councillor O'Toole, you can conclude.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much Mayor Given. As for funding by the federal government, the minister's already said that there would be funding for operational costs, they do not fund the building of the museums at this point in time, so Mr Crokin can think about that. As we look at this vast city, the education aspect of the Grand Prairie Regional College will benefit from having paleontologists visiting from all over the world, and offering more advanced courses and education just to the college. When we look at the, the elementary grades, the dinosaur society has established an education system in place, curriculum, that is being honored by the Alberta education, and will be out, and put into the system in the near future. We've already, and, once again, they've already been, and talked to schools from all over northern Alberta, with I think fourteen hundred students in a very short time, in this last year. So, it's more than just a building, it's the whole concept of dinosaurs, and the education, and the tourism. When we look at Drumheller, once again, it was a small town, but they get over two hundred thousand hotel rooms in a year, just in, in the tourism. So, in closing remarks, this is a project that will be initiated and started, if funding goes through in the early beginning of the year, and if we don't support this, then it'll be all up for nothing. Thank you very much.
Okay, so councillor O'Toole closes, so we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so, that motion carries, so we'll move on. Gary, I think you've still got at least one item on your list, left, hey?
Thank you your worship, yes, there's still the transit, downtown transfer terminal. As council's aware, the transfer terminal is, would, is, project would be a location where transit customers can load and unload buses and transfer between buses, providing an off-street facility to do that, and would include some amenities, including shelter and washrooms, and that would be determined in final design. The, the budget, 2012 capital plan shows that this is funded to five million dollars, with approximately three point three million coming from Greentrip funding. The challenge is that the second call for Greentrip funding has still not yet been announced, and administration has been advised by provincial administration that is still waiting, pending ministerial approval. So that is the challenge that's before the city at this point in time, to proceed or not, pending on Greentrip funding.
So Mr Roth, just a question, before we get a motion on this, of clarification, so it's in the city's capital plan, about three million dollars was intended to be funded through Greentrip, is the balance funded in our capital plan, or unfunded?
Yes your worship, I'm sorry I missed that, the balance is funded, it is funded from the future expenditures reserve, that is one point seven million dollars as well.
So then, the only motion would be to remove this from the capital plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I, I mean, this already appears, so if somebody wants it to not appear, that's what we would do, I guess? I don't know if anybody has any other, sees a different angle on it, councillor Rice, you're in the queue here first?
And I wonder at what point, I would like to see us take a look at designing it with a parcade, either below ground or above the terminal, and that way you could start looking at recouping some of your costs. So, I don't know where we would do that, like, I want it to stay in, so I don't want to make the motion, but I believe that just simple design direction could make a big difference.
Well, I suppose councillor Rice, if you wanted to forward that to the appropriate standing committee, my understanding is that some of the details on location are coming to council committee next week, and so perhaps that'd be appropriate to have that discussion there, about potential for that sort of item?
Okay, so could I forward it now, or?
Sure.
Okay, and then, then I won't make a motion, and it just stays in.
Just, correct, yeah, okay. So, other discussion on this? councillor Radburn?
So we don't need to make the motion, to make a motion, we have been making a motion in the positive, and if anybody wanted it to change, to defeat it, but-
Yeah, I mean, this one is already in.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's no positive to make, aside to, yeah. Okay. So, Mr Roth, I think you're finally, that's your list, okay. Oh, sorry, excuse me, there was one additional item, and we said that we talked about them as we went through service areas, so councillor Gustafson had raised the Dave Bar Twinning, and so, Mr Roth, I don't know if you have your capital plan handy, and could identify what was in the plan, or what's identified in the plan? At this point?
Your worship, if I could just have a moment and-
Sure. I think everybody's flipping to the page, Mr Anderson's very familiar with the capital plan, and I think he has it. Mr Anderson?
Your worship, the, there is eight million dollars in the capital plan for 2015 and beyond, for twinning the Dave Bar Arena.
Okay, so it's in 2015, so basically beyond the scope of this cycle?
That's correct.
After, after 2014, and it is unfunded. councillor Gustafson, that's the information, did you have any action that you wanted to take with that information?
Thank you Mayor Given. This has been on the table for a long time, probably since I was just a little kid. We took it off a little while back, when the county decided they were going to build a twin ice arenas way out in the county, surrounded by highways. Even the county residents are complaining that you can't get at their facility due to the fact that it's surrounded by highways and way out in the county. I think it's important that we have these facilities around the majority of children, the Dave Bar is a perfect spot for that. I believe if we don't supply our children with stuff to do, they're going to get into trouble and cost us money, perhaps in other, other avenues of, of corruption. So, I would like to move that we support four million dollars of this in 2013, and they're going to ask me where we get this, so I suggest that we borrow it.
Okay, so, we were fairly, tried to be fairly tight on the sources, and we just had a big conversation about allowing administration the flexibility, and so I'd feel really bad if I suggest we could do something different here, so if your intent is to add four million dollars in 2014, or sorry, 2013, councillor Gustafson, is that correct?
Yes sir.
Then maybe we can do the same as we have with some of the previous motions to, if the motion carries to allow administration the flexibility to identify the appropriate strategy, do that, that'd be okay?
Sure.
Okay, okay, so councillor Gustafson has a motion on the floor to add four million dollars in 2013 for Dave Bar Twinning. councillor Rice?
So, like, when we can do that, because it'll make a big difference in terms of our final number, whether, if it's, you know, how it's funded.
I think when we go through all the referred items, administration will take a little bit of a break, look at appropriate strategies to do that, we'll return to council, and then council will have some final decisions, for example, on the Eastlink Centre borrowing, use of MSI and other, other items, and as well, council will be able to decide what they'd like to see for that.
So it'll all be done today?
I believe so, yeah, I see Ken nodding that his crack team would be able to assemble that information for us, so-
Okay, thank you.
So we can keep it at that, the intent level, about adding four million dollars in 2013 for Dave Bar Twinning.
Thank you.
councillor Radburn?
Thank you Mayor Given, I won't be supporting councillor Gustafson's motion, my heart and mind are supportive of his motion, but the pragmatics dictate that I know for certain, minor hockey is using, starting in January, the sports plex significantly, and I just believe, as we've discussed in the past, we need to see some history of the need, once the sports plex gets open, to decide when, not if, but when, we twin the Dave Bar. So I don't think it's for 2013. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Wong?
Thank you Mayor Given, I also agree that this is a little too premature, I think once the sports plex opens, we'll have a better understanding of what the usage patterns are going to be like. The county did go through some extensive research before they built the sports plex, determining how many sheets of ice were required in the region to ease the burden on- determining how many sheets of ice were required in the region to ease the burden on the, on all our facilities, and I think it's really important for us to wait till the opening and see how everything settles out.
Okay, thanks councillor Wong. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I support this one hundred percent. I've had the child go through the minor hockey, and it's due. We delayed it because of a decision out of our jurisdiction, and I do believe that for-profit sports plex is not going to serve the needs of the kids around Dave Bar or anywhere in the southern part of the city. So the sooner we get it to end, I feel it'll be a lot better for the citizens of Grand Prairie and minor hockey.
Okay, further discussion and debate, I see a couple others click in, thank you. But I'll just take the opportunity to say that I won't support the motion. Certainly appreciate the intent, but for me, timing is everything. I want to see how the addition of the sports plex impacts the operations at our current arenas, and see if there's any revenue loss there before we make a decision about adding capital dollars and ongoing operational support and subsidy to expansion of any of those facilities, so. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and as well, I won't be supporting it, not because we don't maybe need another arena, see what the county with their new sports plex with the two arenas is going to do for the region area, and we know that building was thirty million, and kudos to them for building it, and we built the Simpoo, a hundred and ten million, and just adding four million, the debt goes up, and as it goes up, we gotta pay for that debt. And I'd like to see it go the other way, where we start leveraging taxes in a different scale, so I won't support it.
Okay, thanks councillor McLean. Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given, thank you. I will not be supporting this. I do believe that we do probably need a, another facility sometime. It's not a matter of is it right now. As the reasons were given before, I think we need to do a little bit of research and to see exactly how much usage the county facility will be getting. They've already have the Grand Prairie Minor Hockey working out there, so I think we need to give this another year of consideration, but at this present time, I will not be supporting.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Councillor Gustafson, if you'd like to close?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I just want to remind everybody of how the stats are skewed on this, on the usage of these facilities. If we were to take fifteen minutes off after midnight, and if we were to take fifteen minutes off in the morning on how they, before six AM, on how they tally the numbers for these, for these statistics on the usage of these facilities, you would find that we are in dire need of a facility of more ice space in Grand Prairie. So I'm assuming this motion is, might not pass, but under the circumstances, I just want to remind everybody to remember those numbers, how they, how they're tallied, and I wish that would change, so that it would show that we are real in need of a more ice service in Grand Prairie.
Thanks councillor Gustafson, so close debate and call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does not pass, so I believe that that was the only other item in the community, community living, so we would move on to community safety. I'm Dr. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Given. First item on the agenda is traffic signals at Ninety-Ninth Avenue and Ninety-seventh Street. And just to remind you, this was going to be addressed as part of the East Cuplet project, and since we are not going forward with that, we have a safety issue at that location with traffic going southbound, so we're suggesting traffic lights should be put in place. The alternate that we would suggest is closing the southbound traffic off, which would be an alternate to that, but certainly we're recommending traffic lights at this point.
Okay, thanks very much. And is this, I see that these are all funded items, so are these, administration recommending a change to the capital plan that council needs a motion to endorse? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, they are all funded, so this would be in addition.
Sorry, so, so this is not, is this new money to, to questions, is this new money to the capital plan that's being requested?
It is new money, but most of it's coming from transportation levies and reserves.
Okay, so, but doesn't, so it doesn't have an impact on our tax?
It won't, it won't impact that nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar number.
Okay, so essentially, administration is asking for a funding source from existing funds to be dedicated to this, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councillor Rice?
Is this not money, didn't they pay it? The Junction Point developers had to pay for that at some point, and so we've had their money for a long time?
If, if that's the, go ahead, Ken.
There was a portion that was contributed, but it isn't the complete cost of the project.
And that's, that money probably would, went into the transportation system levy where it's been sitting now?
Okay, so we don't need to make a motion? If nobody makes a motion, it's in, it stays?
That's what I wanted to clarify.
No, you would need to make a motion to add it into the plan.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, this takes in the part by the elders' shelter and that type of thing, the matey.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So any other discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Okay, thank you, that motion carries. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. The next item is the repair and replacement program for traffic signals, and basically we did a condition assessment of all of our traffic signals, and this figure is reflective of the needs that we've identified by doing that, that assessment.
Okay, and so is this similar as with the last one, that it's funded from a reserve or a transportation system levy or other? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, there's currently five hundred thousand dollars in the program. This would be an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from one of those reserves or grant programs.
So this is from existing funds, it's not new funds into the budget?
Correct.
Okay, councillor, so we do need a motion, again, if we could, to add this. Councillor McLean?
Mayor Given, I'll make the motion for the traffic signal repair and replacing program for two hundred and fifty thousand in the two thousand and thirteen budget, and I'd just like to speak to it.
Sure.
I think it's very open, and lately we've been talking about left-hand turns in the city, a few of us councillors, and I've been bringing it up for a while. One off the top of my mind is just on Highway Forty, it's a provincial road, but to go into TD, Holiday Inn, all that, no left-hand turn. There's a number of these left-hand turns, and left-hand turns are where a lot of people get in trouble with accidents, so I'm hoping there's a big portion of this in there. I don't know, there's a few of them, but I think it should be singled, that we've, it's been talked about lately, and there's a problem in our community with left-hand turns and no singles, so I will support it, but it's, hopefully it works.
Okay, thanks councillor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Dr. Walker? Is that our first unanimous one?
Thank you. Next one is the intelligent traffic signal process. This was anticipated to be funded under the IT grant that we received for the wireless program, but discovered that it doesn't actually qualify for that funding, and this would actually put the ability to control traffic lights through a single point or multiple points in the system. So what it probably will not seriously affect the peak times, but it will definitely affect the off-peak times as far as how long traffic may be sitting, waiting for a light change when there's no one coming. So the system will actually become intelligent rather than, right now it's a manual operation, and it's a very time-consuming operation at this point.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Walker. Have, so again, this is in the same category as the others, recommended to be funded from an existing reserve or existing funds, but we needed a motion to sort of formalize that into the budget. Councillor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move the fifteen hundred, one point five million.
You get, you get one light.
Yeah.
Boom, yeah.
One intelligent light.
Thanks very much. Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna definitely support this. I hear a lot of complaints about how our traffic signal lights need some timing adjustments, and if our staff are busy tweaking all the lights during non-peak times, which are really the non-high demand times, it doesn't really allow them to address the peak issues or those major issues where you get a lot of traffic and you're gonna have to wait three or four sets of lights before you can make your turn. This, this kind of system will basically free up staff time to be able to, to look at other issues a little more closely.
Okay, councillor Rice?
So basically, nothing would change if we don't do this?
That is correct.
Okay, so, like, four weeks...
So just to clarify, we'll be using funds out of the transportation system levy to do, or, sorry, or some other source, I'm not sure which source administration is recommending.
Right, it's not a...
Doesn't impact our tax increase or need to collect new taxes in two thousand and thirteen, just to clarify. We will be using some reserves to be able to do this.
Couldn't we use it for something else if we didn't use it for this?
I think it's a, probably a, of course we could, but I believe it's a source that is specific to these types of projects, so I don't know if Mr. Anderson or Mr. Walker have some additional information on the funding source for this project?
Kinda sad that we've evolved into a society that doesn't want to wait an average of ninety seconds.
Mr. Anderson, do you have some information on what the funding source of this project is?
Yes, the funding source is MSI, and as you're aware, we did the infrastructure project where we set up the city wireless infrastructure, that was a significant cost and was shared by all three levels of government. This is the first real big application to run on that infrastructure, so it's quite important.
Okay, thanks. So I'll be supporting the motion. I think the best way that I've had this system explained to me is essentially it will monitor the traffic that's there and be able to dynamically respond to how many vehicles are there. So if, in off-peak hours, there's a vehicle waiting to turn, and the light would take, normally take two minutes to turn, it can tell that there's a vehicle waiting, but there's no other vehicles coming, and so it will advance that, that turn. I think there's a potential that in, during peak times, it can monitor how many vehicles are stacked up, waiting to go through an intersection, and can respond by giving a longer opportunity. And so I think it's intelligent in terms of its responsiveness to the traffic that's on the roadway in front of it, is the best way to explain it, so. And I think that that's a needed improvement. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. A question directed to Mr. Walker, director. This system that we're gonna be possibly putting in, the police and the fire servers would have access to it as well, do you make changes?
Yes, Mayor Given, actually, the process right now is that we have cyber-controlled processes. This, if this goes ahead, then we will actually switch to a model that is actually, has some kind of a signal on the vehicles that activate, so it'll, again, be tied in with this wireless system.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Is this an intelligent traffic signal system in other jurisdictions of our size?
Dr. Walker?
You know, I really don't know the history. I've certainly seen them in the more major facilities, like Los Angeles and places like that, use them all the time. I think as you get to a size like Grand Prairie, it's really difficult to not have these, because other, you know, daily we're actually adjusting lights right now, and that's a manpower process. This will actually allow us to do that. So I would suggest, if you looked across Alberta, you're probably, most of the major cities have some form of an intelligent system, either in the, in place or working on it right now.
So, just a supplement, so right now, we just have those little sensors underneath the roadways leading up to a, to a light?
Yes, we do have some video stuff as well. The, the challenge is, right now, every light is an individual light, so you can't actually tie lights together and make one change and say, well, even tracking down, you know, through three lights, you actually have to manually adjust them. We also have a challenge right now with the clocks, and each one of them are different times quite often, and, you know, so it's, it's not just a simple, set them all for nine o'clock.
Yeah, and I think people driving at different times of the day know that it's a very unintelligent traffic system that we have right now. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Dr. Walker?
Thank you. The next one is the traffic impact analysis on One Hundred and Second Street, north of One Hundred and Sixteenth Avenue up to One Hundred and Thirty-Second. This is an area that we've gotten multiple complaints about traffic over the last couple of years, and what we'd like to do is the analysis and determine what the options are there. So this is forty thousand dollars. Again, we'd need a vote to put it in.
Okay, councillor McLean?
I'll just make that motion. Make the motion that traffic impact analysis for One Hundred and Second Street, back One Hundred and Sixteen Ave to One Hundred and Thirty-Second Ave, for forty thousand dollars in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, thanks councillor McLean. Discussion and debate on the motion? Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would hope that it would include bringing it up from fifty kilometers to at least sixty kilometers. There's been a lot of speeding tickets there, and it's, there's only one entrance there, is the church, the Jehovah Witness Church, and the road hasn't been developed by that condominium complex there, so I think that's timely. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Dr. Walker?
Okay, the next one is a increase to our streetlight program, and what's recommended is that we increase it by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the current amount. This is, the, the original report looked at two thousand and eleven costs. We've since done an update to, currently to this year, and we now reflect that new figure in this amount, so basically, we're asking to increase this one time, so we actually reflect our actual costs of streetlights. I believe there's already been discussion about some of the opportunities we are looking at to reduce some costs, and certainly working with AUMA and some of the bigger partners to do that on a more global basis is what's gonna make sense.
Okay, okay, motion, discussion and debate. Look for a motion council to introduce this. Councillor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll make the motion that we fund the street lighting program to the, to the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, thanks councillor Monroe. Discussion and debate on the motion? Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This has been bothering me the last, since this has been come on the table. It went from five hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty in a matter of two weeks. What's gonna happen by the time we get here to this table next year? We've been waiting for the province, I guess, for about a year now to come up with something. We've talked about it around administration table to possibly do something on our own end to, to, to lower our power bill. So that raised the question, you know, what is the purpose of streetlights? You can say that it's for safety, for traffic, but my car has lights on it, even when I'm going backwards. You can say it's for the, for the guy walking down the path, but there's a majority of paths, or a majority of lights that don't have paths under them. There's a majority, the subdivisions, the new subdivisions that have the whole subdivision lit up and, you know, one or two houses in them. You know, from approximately twelve midnight till, till four AM, four AM, there's no taxpayers underneath those streetlights, whether they're driving, walking, or anything else. So, you know, I would just rather turn them off. Save a million dollars, next year it's gonna be another million. If we wait for the province to come up with whatever they're dreaming up, we're gonna spend another million. You know, we need to make a statement here that we can't afford to just throw more cash at our problem, and the province needs to hear that. So if we have to sleep in the dark in the middle of the night, I'm okay with that. So I'll be voting against this strongly, and I encourage the rest of council to do the same. We can turn them off.
Okay, thanks councillor Gustafson. Other discussion and debate on the motion? Councillor Rice? Counselor Rice?
Does the system allow us to turn off, say, every other one? Or are they all hooked together?
For administration, Director Walker, can you add-
Um, as I understand it, that is not as simple as-
Okay.
The, you know, we don't have the switch on each one that allows us to turn them off, and there are some fixed costs with having the lights off anyway, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, other discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Um, and so the, the, uh, motion was to add this to the 2013 budget. Thank you. That motion carries. Um, Director Walker, you had something on fire department?
Fire department, yes. Uh, next item, um-
It flashed up very quickly on the screen. I see there was one opposed. That was Counselor Gustafson. It was recording.
So, uh, the fire department, uh, recommended, uh, budget increase now is eighty-eight thousand dollars. So basically, uh, they have, uh, started off with a hole of two hundred thousand, which to date has been filled with revenues of, uh, about fifty thousand. They're anticipating another, uh, increase in revenues over the next year of nineteen thousand, uh, reflective of some different, uh, pieces of their, uh, revenue program. And, uh, the rest, the forty-three thousand would be, uh, savings and, and expenditures.
Thanks very much, Director Walker. So as we have with all the others, Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move funding for the fire department for eighty-eight thousand dollars in, for the 2013 operating budget.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Wong. Uh, discussion, debate on the motion? Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, Mr. Walker, so if we do not fund this today, what, uh, what's not going to happen? We've been criticized before because they'll say, well, what happened to that program? And, well, council cut it at budget. So, you know, what's, what's gonna get cut if this, this doesn't go through today?
Director Walker?
You know, certainly where they've been to date is they've had the hole in their budget, and they've continued to work the, to find revenues, to fix it, and to control expenditures. They will continue to do that. Uh, what, if, if you didn't do anything with this today, it's already a budgeted item that we will continue to try and manage. And our process is the fire department, if they come in and, uh, you know, at the end of the year have a, a gap, we look first in the service area. So if there's other folks in the, uh, community safety area that have revenues to fill that gap, then we'd certainly be using those revenues to make up that. Uh, it becomes a reportable thing to, to council.
Okay, um, Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor Given. I guess I should've given a little bit of context behind what this motion was. Um, this was originally in the operating budget as, um, expected revenue from the county and the MD of Greenview for specialty services such as water rescue. And, uh, at the beginning of last year, the county and MD have decided to, uh, create their own, uh, or get that service another way, uh, so that, they're, they're funding it a number of different ways. Um, so it, it created a shortfall in our budget, and I know that administration has been doing a, a great job at reducing that, uh, that shortfall, and I think they'll continue to do that. But in the meantime, just to balance our budget, um, I really think that they've done almost as much as they possibly can, and it needs to go back in.
Okay, uh, any further discussion, debates? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, two opposed. Um, Director Walker, I think you had a-
Thank you.
Couple others left?
Uh, yes, um, have One Hundred and Thirty Second Avenue, um, and this basically is just a change in funding source. So, uh, Ken maybe can review that?
Mr. Anderson, can you identify the change in funding, like, the from and to? If, I don't know if you have that, or what the proposed funding source is? So this is money that is already-
Actually, uh, you know, I think I have that. I believe what the, the intent is, is to use a highway grant that has, has been accumulating. It's the money we get from the province to maintain, uh, the highways that go through the city. And, uh, the in, this, this fund has been building up. The intent would be to spend it on this this year, and then it will be included as a regular, uh, process to go back into the operating departments.
Okay, um, Counselor Rice?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Counselor Rice makes the motion for change in funding source on this item? Uh, discussion, debate on that motion?
What was it funded under?
Does somebody from administration-
Actually, it was, uh, MSI funding before.
So we, now, we've just freed up another three hundred and fifty-two thousand in MSI.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay, okay. Uh, discussion, debate on Counselor-
Yes.
Rice's motion. Counselor Wong? Or, sorry, uh, sorry, do we have a-
I have the motion.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry, Counselor Wong?
So I'm, I'm not really clear on what this project actually is, again. Can we clarify that?
Okay. It's a great, great, great question, 'cause I'm not sure what it is either. One Hundred and Thirty Second Avenue, I believe, is the, uh, resurfacing of the, uh, hun- yeah, One Hundred and Second Street to Eighty-Fourth Street? That, that's what it is.
Okay, um, okay, so it's the, uh- So heading east from, I guess-
One Hundred and Second Street.
Heading east from the railway-
Yes.
Uh, on the north end by case, heading east past the entrances to, uh, Crystal Lake.
That's great.
Okay, so do we know whether or not this also affects what came out of the functional study for One Hundred and Thirty Second Avenue? Like, I know there was some safety issues concerning the service pro-
Um, my intent, or my understanding of that is that there will be some of those things that will be brought as part of this project to end up with, so.
Okay, and will council get a chance to see that before it gets approved?
Yeah, yeah. So, so the, uh, projects obviously would have to come forward to council for approval, as we do with all projects that we would eventually tender out and, and approve. Uh, Director Walker?
Uh, so just a correction here, uh, when I say One Hundred and Second Street, it's actually, it, it's west of a hundred, right through to the, uh, past the, the, uh, Crystal Lake turnoffs. So it does include the, uh, the Hundredth Street in this project.
Oh, One Hundredth Street intersection.
Intersection is included in this project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, I'll be supportive of the motion as long as council gets a chance to see the, the design before we, we go ahead and approve it, because I'd hate to see something approved that, uh-
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, further discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and, uh, Director Walker, one more?
Thank you. Uh, the next one is One Hundredth Avenue upgrades, and this is Ninetieth Street to Eighty-Fourth Street. It's, uh, one point six million, and it's basically a, uh, change of funding again from, uh, to now use, uh, AMIP funding, uh, instead of, uh, MSI funding.
So, uh, the AMIP is a grant program, if I'm remembering from committee-
Right.
That's has ended and-
Ended.
Are getting to the point where we can no longer carry that money forward, where MSI, I think we have more flexibility to carry that money forward. And so that's why administration's recommending that change, basically use that grant money that was kinda gonna expire, I guess, relatively soon.
I'm gonna tell you, where's Ninetieth Street?
Okay, Counselor McLean, uh, so, because we've had an introduction from administration, Counselor McLean?
Just a simple question. Well, I believe, is this, like, just when Swan Haven starts going to Eighty-Fourth? That's the area there?
No, this is One Hundredth Avenue.
One Hundred Avenue, okay.
This is heading east from-
Heading east.
Crystal Lake, uh, towards the city's boundary.
Different area, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, uh, sorry, uh-
So Ni- Ninetieth Street is, uh, if, uh, if you look at the road by Safety City, it's actually two blocks-
Yeah.
Towards the center of city and outward from there.
Yeah, okay, uh, Counselor Wong?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll make the motion to fund the project for One Hundredth Ave upgrades.
Change the funding source?
Change the funding source, yes, sorry.
Thanks, Counselor Wong. Discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, I believe, uh, Counselor, uh-
We have one other item in my area, uh-
Sure.
Which was a-
Referral, yeah.
Yes.
So Counselor Crokin, you had highlighted, uh, Eighty-Fourth Street. Um, so is there's some specifics there, or, uh, any additional information that you needed?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, the, the additional information I'd like to know is who all would be sharing the funding if that was to go through? Would that be a joint project with the province, ourselves, county, uh, land developers? I mean, if it, if it isn't, uh, I think it's a, it's an awful lot of money just for us to fund.
Director Walker, can you speak to that, or?
Sorry, I don't know, uh, if there's been any discussion about shared funding. I know that when this project first came, uh, it was recommended, uh, back in the, the original budget process, uh, that, I believe that's the pot of money that council decided to use as the strategic roads money. So, uh, it was, uh, probably in the, in the neighborhood of seven million dollars, six point eight million dollars at that point. And, uh, I'm not sure if there's been an update to that figure. Uh, the study is actually coming to council on Monday now, I think, so.
But that, that, um, those monies that were previously budgeted were, I believe, a hundred percent city, uh, grants aside. I mean, some of that may have been grant money, or, sorry.
Well, actually, uh, I believe about two million of that was from the, um, roads, uh, tax, uh, sorry.
Transportation system, which developers contribute to.
Which is required, yeah, is a con- contribution from developers.
Uh, just further on that, uh, Mayor Given. On the strategic road funding, could we use that funding then on the other side of town, like on the west, uh, to further enhance some of the roads, like to the airport, or?
That, that was council's, that's council's decision as to where they use it. Uh, the, the only challenge that might occur is the transportation levy funds have to be used for roads that have contributed to that.
For specific, yeah, types of projects, but it's a flexible funding source that we can apply to.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, uh-
Was there any action-
Community Walker.
Any action you wanna take there, Counselor Crokin? No? That answered your question?
No ans- uh, no, no, no action, thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor McLean?
Uh, that's okay.
Okay, thanks very much. So I believe that that's through our list of referred items, so, uh, Mr. Anderson, do you have a running tally, or do you wanna take a moment and caucus?
Need a caucus.
Okay, so, uh, Ken, can you give us an idea about how long? Are we fifteen minutes? Ten minutes?
Uh, give us ten to fifteen.
Okay, so we'll do that before we break for lunch. We'll, we'll take a short break now, and we'll come back in about quarter after.
Crackadoodle, Kenny? Yeah, crack team, crackadoodle, yeah. Crackadoodle, whoever the hell she is.
Shut my mic off.
Shut my mic off.
Sorry, we're ready to call back. I think administration has done their math and can tell us what the impact of our decisions is so far. Ken, do you want to take that?
Sure. First of all, just summarize the decisions you made. Internet voting was 300,000, research and innovation was 25,000, the Grand Prairie Library was 200,000, the Rotary Shelter was 45,000, the Arts Guild Capital was 36,311, the Vital Signs was 25,000, the CKC Sports Field was 350,000, and the Dinosaur Museum would be 400,000. So the total is 1.31 million dollars. So our suggestion is that the dinosaur funding of $400,000 be funded through MSI. Takes that out of there, so the balance is $981,000. And if you show this slide up here, there's no need to change this. We will still fund off the shortfall with the tax revenue from 2012, and you can see that the actual tax revenue is slightly more than the shortfall, so that's an additional $24,000, and we spent $7,000 less than the $988,000 operating contingency we had. So the bottom line is, we went from 3.6 to, no, 3.7 to 3.6, and there's the impact. So for the average house of 267,000, the municipal taxes in 2012 would be 27.15, in 2013 it would be 28.13, and the increase is $98.
Okay, so, I mean, so essentially, we added, the items that were passed were added by council. There is no additional borrowing for the East Link Center shortfall, and the proposed increase for 2013 went from 3.7% down, 0.1% down to 3.6, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Council, is there, I believe we need a motion to forward these changes on to council, is that correct?
You give me a motion to approve the funding strategy as I just presented.
Okay, okay, so I see councillor Tool is the first in the queue here. Councillor Tool?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would like to make that motion.
Okay, so a motion to approve the funding strategy as recommended by administration, which of course includes all the motions previously made by council. So discussion and debate on that motion? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And just, Ken, on, we're not going to be borrowing any money. It's all being utilized with the education, extra leftover, MSI for net debt. It's all worked out.
Mr. Anderson?
That's correct. There is no more borrowing from today.
Okay.
And just, yeah, I'd like to see a go lower.
Okay, councillor Rice?
Okay, so that, the average, the taxes of the average homeowner would rise roughly $10 a month, not quite 10.8 or something like that. That's just the municipal portion, so the school boards could raise it another.
Mr. Anderson?
Well, there is a school board piece that goes with it. It is roughly 30% of the tax bill. We won't know those numbers until the provincial budget in the spring.
Okay, so, but it could go higher than the...
There is the potential. It could go higher, it could go lower. We've been quite fortunate in the past, it's gone lower, but it could go the other way on us.
Okay, thank you.
But of course, we need to highlight, we don't have control over that portion of the tax bill. It's up to the provincial system of assessment. Okay, any further discussion or debate on councillor Tool's motion to recommend forward these changes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe that concludes all our business for the 2013 budget review, and thanks very much, everybody, for all your hard work. Administration, council, mostly administration, council for your votes and motions. And we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.